The time is 6:02 PM. It's Tuesday, October 18th. I'm going to call the special city council meeting to order. Would the city secretary please call the roll?
Mitchell?
Here.
Rizzo?
Present.
Flores, Kale?
Here.
Bradshaw?
Here.
Parsley?
Here.
Tobias?
Here.
All right, six members present. We have a quorum. Next up, citizen comments period. At this time, we ask anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak on any item, to please do so. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes and that you direct those comments to the mayor and council. We also ask that you fill out a citizen comments form and submit that to either myself or the city secretary. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward and speak? Seeing none, I'm going to close citizen comments period. Next up, executive session. I guess I was last, wasn't I? Pursuant to Chapter 551 of Texas Government Code, the city council reserves the right to convene into executive session from time to time, as deemed necessary during this meeting. The city council may convene into executive session pursuant to any lawful exception contained in Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, including any or all of the following topics pending or contemplated litigation or to seek the advice of a city attorney pursuant to Section 551.071, Kyle Uber 314 update, Julia Parker Family Partnership and the LW Parker Family Trust, Z220104, and convene into executive session pursuant to Section 551.087, Texas Government Code, to deliberate regarding the offer of economic incentives to one or more business prospects that the city seeks to have locate, stay, or expand in or near the city, Project Shanrock, Project Traverse. This meeting back to order. There was no action taken during executive session. There will be action taken now. I'd like to make a motion to approve a settlement agreement between the City of Kyle and the Department of Justice regarding Uber Kyle 314.
Second.
Motion by Mayor, second by Mayor Pro Tem Rizzo. Is there discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Motion to adjourn? All right, we are adjourned. Bye, everyone. No, I'm just kidding. We're in a silly mood. We're dressed up for Halloween. A little early, but we don't meet again for the rest of October.
Forget about it, Mayor. Forget about it.
All right, good evening, everyone. The time is 7:02 PM. It's Tuesday, October 18th, and I would like to call this regularly scheduled city council meeting to order. Would all please rise to the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the city secretary please call the roll?
Mitchell?
Here.
Rizzo?
Present.
Flores, Kale?
Here.
Bradshaw?
Here.
Parsley?
Here.
Tobias?
Here.
All right, six members present. We have a quorum. Next up, approval of the minutes.
Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve the minutes for city council special meeting, October 3rd, and the regular meeting same day, October 3rd, 2022.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Tobias, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Rizzo, is that we approve the minutes. Is there discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Next up, citizen comments period. At this time, we ask anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak on any item, to please do so. We ask that you fill out a citizen comments form and that you limit your comments to three minutes. We also ask that, I messed that up. I haven't messed that up in a long time. So, first up, Susan Reina.
Good evening. My name is Susan Reina, and I'm a resident of Kyle. I'm also on the board that owns the Catherine M. Porter House here in Kyle at 508 West Center Street. And I wanted to let everyone in Kyle know about an event we have coming up next week. We have a well-known artist, a poet, who will be doing a reading and book signing on the evening of Friday, October 28th, at 7:30 PM there at the Catherine M. Porter House at 508 West Center Street. Her name is Amy Nezukuma Tatil, and I ask her forgiveness for how I pronounce her name. But she's the author of the New York Times bestselling illustrated collection of nature essays, World of Wonders, and Praise of Fireflies, Whale Sharks, and Other Astonishments. She has four previous poetry collections and a chapbook and some other things that she's done. But her writing has appeared in the Best American Poetry, the New York Times Magazine, ESPN, Ploughshares, American Poetry Review, and Tin House. In 2021, she became the first-ever poetry editor for Sierra Magazine, the storytelling arm of the Sierra Club. She is a professor of English and creative writing at the University of Mississippi's Master of Fine Arts Program. And we are very honored to have her come to Kyle, so I wanted to make sure to invite everyone again to come out on Friday, October 28th, at 7:30 PM at 508 West Center Street here in Kyle. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's all the citizen comments forms that I have. Is there anyone else who wishes to come forward and speak on any item? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close citizen comments period. It is now closed. Next up is agenda order. Is there anyone who wishes to move any items on the agenda? Councilman Flores, Kale?
All right, thank you. Since my item was postponed from last week, I would like to discuss Agenda Item Number 34.
Okay. You want to discuss it right now?
Yes, please.
All right, would you like to go through the proclamations first and presentations?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, next up, Agenda Item Number Four, Presentation and Recognition of the Parks and Recreation Board and Parks and Recreation Department for their work to establish Kyle as a gold-certified city by Scenic, Texas. The City of Kyle was very honored to be presented with a gold certification at the Texas Municipal League Conference. There were, I believe, four of us on council who were there. It was a pretty neat moment. It's something that the city has not, you know, received before, and I think that it's a testament to the work of the council, the work of the Parks Department, the work of our Parks Board. And while we were there, I wanted to give this as an opportunity to just really speak to the work of our Parks Department and our Parks Board because, you know, the Scenic City Certification was not something that, to my knowledge, was on any of our radar, but was something that the board pursued and the department put in that application and received. And so, I just wanted to take a, if you're on the Parks Board or if you're here with the Parks Department, if you wouldn't mind standing? I'd like to give them a round of applause. I see Amanda, I see Lorelei, I see Mariana in the back. Thank you all for your work. We would love to take a picture, and I wanted to turn it over to my colleagues if they had anything that they wanted to add.
Yes, going to the TML conference and then having, being invited out there, it was very humbling to see the great work that you all did. And it was very neat to see the City of Kyle and a lot of their parks and a lot of the landscaping that was in their presentation, along with other cities from Belvedere and Corpus Christi and other, in big cities like Houston, and to see the City of Kyle up there. And a lot of it is all to you for making that happen. So I wanted to say thank you for all your hard work. Thank you to the Parks Team for their hard work, working out there, making sure that our parks are beautiful, and also to the Parks Board themselves for coming up with very creative ideas to make our city very beautiful. So, Ms. Stark, thank you very much, and everybody else. I appreciate it very much.
So, at this time, we could bring everybody forward to take a picture. It'd be great. If you'd like to come up and join us?
All right, I might need y'all to squish in just a little bit closer to each other so I can get everyone to adopt a video. A little further back, sorry. All right, on the count of three. One, two, three. All right, thank you all.
All right. All right, next up, Agenda Item Number Five, Presentation, Brief Overview of the Pillows for Peace, Unforgettable Families and Friends of Kyle and Bringing Continuous Awareness During Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Councilman Tobias?
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. Again, it's an honor for me to be able to sponsor this, again, in continuance to recognize the awareness of Domestic Violence Awareness Month. This project here, Pillows for Peace, actually is going on 15 years. And so, I would like to invite Ms. Cynthia Bentley and Ms. Vanessa Westbrook to the front to help with the presentation. These two ladies here are very strong advocates, as you know, in our community and do great work for us. And so, I'd like to be able to present them to you so we can be able to give us an overview of the Pillows of Peace. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm here on behalf of the Kyle Buta Kiwanis Club. I'm the treasurer, along with Ms. Cynthia Bentley, who will introduce herself in just a second for unforgettable family and friends. Pillow of Peace is a project that has been going on in the city now for a while, and Cynthia has led efforts in regards to assisting the Hayes and Caldwell County Women's Shelter in providing this program to victims of domestic violence. As you all are aware, that this month, we look at domestic violence in regards to providing education, in regards to providing various types of information out to the public, and hopefully getting information to those who are in need. We bring awareness to domestic violence. We help those in need, and we educate the community as much as we possibly can. I'd like to also say that this slide, uh, next slide, am I controlling that? Who's controlling that? I can't. Okay. Got it. All right. We want to say that this is in memory of Samantha and Madeline Dean, who were members here in our community, and the tragedy that happened to them, which, of course, was a part of this idea of domestic violence. Now, when we think about the purpose of Pillow of Peace, we're trying to empower survivors and reassure them that they deserve to be safe and free from violence. And whatever way we can provide support to them, we're looking forward in order to do that, and we do that by supporting the Hayes Caldwell Women's Center. The Women's Center has a mission with several broad perspectives. One of those is to create an environment where violence and abuse are not tolerated in this community. The other is to provide education, violence prevention services, and crisis intervention, among other things, to the victims here in our county who rely on us to help them through their needs. In 2021, the center served 2,055 victims, just during 2021. They also provided 7,753 nights at a shelter, which means that folks, whoever they were, in many instances, their children were taken in the middle of the night and given care and support during a very tragic time. Now, one could probably not even imagine this idea of you leaving your home with just what you have on, and in some instances, it could have been maybe pajamas or a nightgown, and going to a facility so that it can help you to be safe. The idea behind Pillow of Peace is that you get to this facility and you're given a pillow, be you an adult or be a child, that you can hold on to, lay your head down, and just for a moment, close your eyes in order to get just a small amount of sleep. So, we can't even, most of us can't even imagine that happening. But think about the opportunity that we can provide, just this very small token, to those victims who need to be put in special care because of something tragic going on in their lives. The community, the Women's Center also conducted 533 child interviews in regards to this connection to child abuse or some type of violence that's gone on in the home. They also received 3,613 helpline calls just in our county and Caldwell County during the year of 2021. So, we know that the need is there. The connection between Pillow of Peace and the Women's Center is that the pillow is provided to the victim to help them to have some sign of security during this tragic time. The Women's Shelter receives victims from various law enforcement organizations that have sent these folks over there in order that they may have some degree of safety while whatever it is that's going on within the household can be resolved. We are going to have a Pillow of Peace donation event on November the 5th, as you can see on the screen. It's going to be at Kohl's here in Kyle, Texas. Again, that's November 5th, pretty much throughout the day. We have several different companies, businesses, as well as agencies that are going to be involved in this process. And we hope that we can call on the community to come by Kohl's on November the 5th and drop off a nice, brand-new pillow or two so that we can add to the collection, which will be sent over to the Women's Center. And then, these will be given out as needed to those that come there. I'm going to defer over to my colleague Cynthia to give you a little bit more information about Pillows of Peace.
Good evening, and thank you for letting us come to address you tonight. My name is Cynthia Bentley. I'm a citizen here in Kyle. I moved here permanently in December of 2012. Prior to that, I did buy a house, but this was my evacuation house. I moved from New Orleans, so you can understand that part. I moved here in December of 2012. By December, by October of 2013 is when Pillow of Peace was introduced in this area. We started with only 32 pillows donating to help Hayes Caldwell Women's Center, and it now has evolved until we're giving out over 5,000 pillows in the Texas area. In 20, two years before, the year before COVID, what was that? 2019. Hayes High School got a rim of Pillow of Peace, and those youngsters took it and they ran with it. They went out to the neighborhood, and they put flyers on all of the neighbors, and they collected over 300 pillows. I had to rent a U-Haul truck. And God is really awesome because right after that, Harvey hit, so we were able to send pillows to Port Oranses, Corpus Christi, Galveston, and also to other various homeless centers in our area. The history of Pillow of Peace, Mary Shotite, who was a resident of Beaumont, Texas, she now lived in New Orleans, started this program 15 years ago. She is a nurse. One of her jobs was to go to the various centers in New Orleans. And she was so exhausted one day about the people that she did see and the stories that she held, that the stories that she heard. She sat in her car and she cried, and all she could do is wait until she got home to get her pillow because she remembered how much comfort her pillow gave her when she laid her head on at night. And this was the inception of Pillow of Peace. Since then, we have also included other things such as cancer awareness, because Mary's sister died last year of cancer, so we included that. And one of the things that you really don't realize, how many people are victims of domestic violence. Domestic violence is not also always something physical, something that you can see. And when I was doing my research on some of the signs of it, I kept realizing, that's me. That's me. I put up with that for 21 years before I got the strength to leave. But in my household, we always had this saying, what goes on in my house stays in my house. So, no one knew what was going on. So, when I finally got the strength to leave, I just left, and it was Christmas time. Just brought my children, went to my mom's house, and I left. And this is what gave me strength. So, my former husband asked my oldest daughter, when is your mom coming home? And she said, I don't think she is. And that's when he called and said, I can't take care of this house. I can't take care of these children. Of course, he did, because I did all of that. Even though he was not letting me sleep at night, I would not have any sleep, go to work with a big smile on my face, and no one knew what was going on in the household. They had a song, and I don't know if any of you remember this. This was from 1963 by Bobby Goldsberg. It's a song called See the Funny Little Clown. It says, "See the funny little clown. See him laugh as you walk by. Everybody thinks he's happy 'cause you never see a tear in his eye. No one knows he's crying. No one knows he's dying on the inside 'cause he laughs, 'cause he's laughing on the outside. No one knows, no one knows. See the funny little clown. He's hidden behind a smile. They all think he's laughing, but I know he's really crying all the while. How his heart is aching, how his heart is breaking on the inside, but he keeps laughing on the outside. No one knows, no one knows." And many times, when I'm sitting in my car before I go off to work, this is what's going on in my head, because this was me. As I said, what went on in my house stayed in my house. No one knew. No, I didn't have any physical wounds, but man, do I have some mental wounds. I have been abused all kind of way mentally. Once I got out of my car after listening to this song or singing this song to myself, I would walk into work, cross the door seal with a big smile on my face, went along my natural day, did my work, and did it exceptional. I was a supervisor for Louisiana Workforce Commission. I ran one of the largest unemployment and employment services in the area. But after I left, it was the same thing. I would think of the song over and over again. And when I turned on my street, because I live at the top of a cul-de-sac, when I turned and I saw that house, my body would just shake, just shake, because that funny little clown was also crying again. Thank you.
We have some information sitting on the table for each of you, if you would like it on your way out. And it just gives you some information about Pillows of Peace, domestic violence, as well as information about the Hayes Caldwell County Women's Center. We also have some information, hotline numbers, as well as a website for those who need. Thank you very much for supporting us on this, and we're hoping, hoping that we can help out our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Bentley, Ms. Bentley, are they going to have stations out, like last year, the police department and the fire department? Are we doing it different this time?
We are going to be at Kohl's with the police department this year. Hopefully, we can include the fire department next year.
Yeah, I know last time they had a little competition going on.
They had a friendly competition. It was fun.
I was wondering if we're doing that again, so.
No, we are only going to have the fire department, sorry, the police department with us at Kohl's. And Kohl's was supposed to show up tonight.
Our police department showed up, so we're halfway there.
That's my buddies back there. Okay, but we will be out on November the 5th at Kohl's from about 10 to 2. But if you come after that time, they will have a box there where you can leave the pillows.
Yeah. Rachel, could we advertise this on our social media pages, please? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bentley, for your story. Again, it was an honor to be able to sponsor this, so we could hear the stories. As you can see, I've got my purple. Thank you right here as well. It does mean a lot. When my son was in high school playing football, he was also part of the, you know, what do you call it, donating to dating violence awareness for high school kids. And that would include all the football players showing signs of sorority to end dating violence, especially in the high school levels, and they would put them on their helmets and stuff. And so, my son was really advocate and part of that with our department. So, thank you, Kohl's, if you're here. Thank you so much for being here, and also the police department as well, Kyle PD, for being sponsors for this, because this is a very serious issue in our communities. It's in every city and every town. Being law enforcement, I see it every single day. And so, it's something that we need to continue to bring the awareness. And for those people that are out there, there is help. Do not be ashamed. And there are resources that can help you out in these situations. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor.
Just one final thought. I just wanted to touch on something that y'all brought up, something that you were talking about, something I personally got to witness. I got a phone call one night that, from the Hayes County Women's Shelter, that they were going to move out of family, and they needed help. They needed volunteers. They needed a truck and trailer. So, I volunteered my truck and trailer that evening. But witnessing the two little girls that were there and seeing what they were going through, they were leaving their homes, they were leaving their toys, they were leaving their swing set behind, it just really touches you when you see something like that. And you are experiencing, when you experience something like that, it changes your life forever. To see these kids leaving everything behind, the safety of their home and everything else, and this mother having to make this drastic change, it definitely changes you. So, anytime you get a chance to donate to the Hayes Caldwell Women's Center, please donate. Please come out and participate in this event coming up. A pillow means a lot. Last year in 2021, during the freeze, Councilman Kale and I went and looked at, during the freeze, we had some displaced seniors from Buta, and they were in one of our churches, and they were sitting there in hard metal chairs. And we stood up, and we promised them that they wouldn't, we wouldn't leave until they had a warm pillow and a warm bed to sleep in. So, a pillow makes a big difference. So, please come out and donate to this. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, next up, Chamber of Commerce Week proclamation. I'm going to read the proclamation. I was going to invite CEO Ms. Julie Snyder to come up and say a few words, if she'd like. Whereas more than 600 local chambers of commerce in Texas distinguish themselves as the voice of business in our state, and whereas the work accomplished by those local chambers has benefited our state through their economic development, tourism promotion, and community development programs, and whereas the local chambers of commerce unceasingly promote their community for quality growth and development, and whereas the business community represented through local chambers of commerce has been a driving force in fostering enhanced educational opportunities, infrastructure improvements, leadership development, the creation of jobs, and a positive vision of the future, and whereas the Chamber of Commerce community in Texas has sought to achieve successful results for our state in a cooperative spirit with other organizations, and whereas the Kyle Area Chamber of Commerce has proudly represented the business community in Kyle and Hayes County for 23 years, and whereas the Kyle Area Chamber of Commerce is a strong partner with the City of Kyle, their mission to promote, advocate, connect, and educate businesses fosters our local economy. Now, therefore, I, Travis Mitchell, proclaim the week of October 17th, 2022, through October 21st, 2022, is Chamber of Commerce Week. It is great to have a Chamber of Commerce that we do work so closely with. It is, it doesn't go lost. I remember 2013, bringing my business to the City of Kyle and sitting down with Ms. Julie and getting to connect with other chamber members helped me to realize that there are, you know, other business owners in the community going through the same struggles. And so, you know, one of the, they call it networking. I thought of it as community at that time, an opportunity to engage with those business owners. And the Chamber of Commerce was just the only way that I knew to connect with so many other businesses personally. And so, our chamber has been a steady advocate for businesses in this community. And Julie, if you'd like to come up and say anything, I'd be happy to have you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. For the record, my name is Julie Snyder. I'm the very proud CEO of the Kyle Area Chamber of Commerce. And first, I want to thank you for taking time to recognize Texas Chamber of Commerce Week. And secondly, I'm going to turn around and ask, if you are a member of the Kyle Area Chamber of Commerce, will you please stand? Yes. This is about them. Thank you for being here tonight. I gave a little bit of a plea this afternoon to our members to come out and be recognized. It's amazing that 30 years ago, September of 1992, I started my very first job with the Chamber of Commerce. I was in sixth grade, of course.
Sixth grade?
Of course. But it's gone fast. I actually started here nine years ago. I am on my 10th year here. One thing about the Kyle Area Chamber of Commerce that I am so proud of is the sense of belonging. is the sense of belonging that we offer. It's our culture. It's the support that each and every one of these business owners, operators, employees, give each other on a daily basis. I witness it every single day. And for the last 30 years, especially the first 27, I spent celebrating, watching businesses open. They grow, they add employees, and we celebrate their successes. And two years into it, it was very challenging to see the struggles of our local businesses. However, the Kyle community, the Hayes County region, continued to support each other. And I was very, very proud to be a part of that and to be helping some of those smaller businesses. One thing I did want to make mention, let me think this through here. Think about it when you're bored. Think about all of the things in our lives. The clothes we wear, the food we eat, the roads we drive, the cars we drive, the wages that allow us to buy our homes or rent our homes. We could not have any of that if it were not for business. And I commend the Kyle leadership. But most importantly, I commend all of our entrepreneurs, our business owners, our operators, and the struggles, the sacrifices, and the dedication that they have put forth to create that and provide those services to us, the citizens. So thank you for celebrating the Chamber of Commerce Week. But more importantly, let's celebrate the business. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we get all our chamber members up front for a photo?
Of course.
We'll stay back.
Yes.
Can we duck?
Roll this bad boy back. You're a part of the area?
I'm sure.
I'm sure.
I'm sure.
This fire, does it see that?
How long?
All right. We need y'all to all kind of squeeze in so we can make this photo work.
By the way, if you're an employee of the city of Kyle, you are a member of the chamber. That's true. Irene, as a trustee, come up here.
Oh.
Can we get y'all to squeeze in just a little bit?
Can we see the council members?
Yes. All right, if you can see us, we can see you. All right, on the count of three, one, two, three.
Don't go away. Ariel, you have to be.
All right, on the count of three, one, two, three.
Thank you.
All right, next up, City Manager's report.
First up is Rachel Sonier to talk about our next road bond open house.
Hello, Council, Leadership. Rachel Sonier, for the record. And I'm here to tell you all about our open house, which will be this Thursday, October 20th. It'll be at the Kyle Public Works Building over on the east side, right over there. From 6:00 to 8:30, it will be a come and go style event. So you can stop in anytime between 6:00 and 8:30. We will have city staff, bond engineers, our financial consultants, all there to answer questions for residents. And we will also have Spanish interpretation available for anyone that needs it. But if you need any more information, go to kylebonds.com. And yeah, we'll be happy to see y'all there.
Thank you, Rachel. Mariana Espinoza, our Parks Director is next.
Mayor and Council, Mariana Espinoza, Parks and Recreation Director. First off, we'd like to thank everyone who came out to celebrate the city of Kyle's birthday, Founder's Day Parade. The city of Kyle was founded in 1880 around the 15th of October. And so every year, we have our annual parade, and we are looking forward to 2023. This Saturday, we have our Trick or Treat on Center Street event from 12 o'clock to 3 o'clock. It is free and open to the public. The costume contest judging is at 1:00 p.m., and the pumpkin decorating contest is at 2:30 p.m. Pumpkins must be decorated on site at the park. That's this Saturday at Mary Kyle Hartson Park. We still have two more October Halloween contests left. The yard decorating contest closes this week on the 22nd, and the costume contest closes on November 1st. And all information is on our website, cityofkyle/recreation. We are still accepting applications for the Veterans Day Parade. Veterans Day Parade, it will be on November 12th, starting at 12 o'clock downtown. It is also the same day as our November Market Day, which will be taking place from 9:00 to 2:00. And the parade will start at 12 o'clock. And of course, additional thanks to everyone for all the support, Mayor and Council for scenic city certification. And while Parks is very honored to have led the charge, it was a whole city effort, specifically engineering, planning, police, environmental services, and trades departments. And that's it for me.
Next up is Kara Waits, our interim Director of Library Services.
Good evening, good evening, Mayor, City Council. I am Kara Waits. I am the interim director. And I'm here to tell you about a couple of the events that we have for the month of October. In celebration of Family Heritage Month, we're doing the Genealogy Bash. It'll run from 9:00 to 6:00 this Friday, October 21st. And if you go to the Kyle Public Library's website, you'll see the link. You can go ahead and print out handouts, or you can come to the library and get them for free. There'll be a variety of workshops. You can pick and choose which ones you want. If you come to the library, we do have refreshments and fun things, activities, and door prizes that you might be interested in. Monday is Halloween, and we have trick or treat through the library. So if you want a good haunted read, come visit us and get a treat. Thank you.
Mayor and Council, Jerry Hendricks, interim City Manager. For the record, you know, you spend a lot of time working with a bunch of great people here in the city of Kyle, and you know that they're talented, but sometimes you don't know how talented. You may remember that our city engineer and floodplain administrator, Kashav Nawali, has been missing for the last couple of weeks. And we thought that, and he did, he went home to Nepal to visit his family. But what we didn't know was that he's a very distinguished book writer. And he received an award there for a book called, and I'm going to mess this up, and I apologize, Arco Bahor, which means Another Dawn. And he received for that book, an award, Padmasri Literature Award, which is akin to a Pulitzer Prize in Nepal. And this book is 14 short stories, fictional stories, about the lives of American Nepalese and their experiences here in our country. And and he is such a Team Kyle player that he even mentioned the city of Kyle and his experiences working here and how proud he is to be in City of Kyle. So, and this was just mentioned earlier this week as an aside. And I was like, this is really cool. So I really wanted to let you all know how proud we are of Kashav and not only the work that he does here, but the work that he does for his country and his talent. And Kashav is available online, virtually. And Kashav, if you'd like to make some comments, and then I'll open up to Council for them to make comments.
Thank you very much. And I know my my team, engineering department, Leon, is always supportive. And I always inform him what I want to do, what I'm doing besides work. So it is, it is, this is my first book, and it is quite an achievement over there for first book. Still can't believe that my book went this far. I'm really happy, and I thank you all for support. And I'm happy to be part of Team Kyle. Thank you.
Can I tell him congratulations?
Yeah, Councilwoman Foscale.
Thank you. Kashav, are you there? He's gone.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, there you are.
I'm listening.
You are such an asset in every way. I want to say thank you. This doesn't surprise me now. The book in general, I figured it'd be about like engineering or something. But I'm really impressed that you can go above and beyond that. And so I just want to say congratulations. This is more than well earned, and you are much loved by the city.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Parsley.
Thank you. The city is full of surprises, for sure. So I would assume that you will make books about floodplain, so we can all understand what's going on. So it is, it is, it's incredible. Congratulations. If you have one, I would love to have a copy. So if you can bring one home, that will be fantastic.
It's not in English, so I wrote it in.
It doesn't matter.
Nepali language.
We've got great translating services here at the city of Kyle.
Councilwoman Tobias.
Yes. What a great accomplishment. You should be very proud of yourself and your family, I'm sure, to have Kyle also mentioned in your book, correct? Now in a worldwide, international scale. That's amazing. And thank you for that.
During my speech, yeah. During my acceptance speech, I mentioned I work for the city of Kyle, and I'm floodplain administrator and engineer there. And I'm proud to serve the community I work for.
Well, that that's amazing, and thank you for that. Because that that really means a lot, that you're addressing the desire and the the honor to work for for a city like ours and the residents and the citizens. And I'm sure they're very proud of you and very happy for your accomplishment. So thank you very much for for that, and also congratulations.
Anyone else? Thank you, Kashav.
Thank you, sir.
That concludes my report.
Hold on. Councilwoman Parsley.
So I do have a comment. I would like to see if there is a chance that we really heavily advertise the bond open house for the 20th over the next two days, just to make sure that, and heavily, I mean, like reposted. I just want to make sure, because I believe this is the last one before voting, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So I would like for people who were not able to come, at least to know that they have the possibility. So if it can be reposted every six hours, so make sure that Kyle entirely sees it.
We leave those stone unturned.
Yes, exactly. So that I would appreciate that. And second, I wanted to thank Mariana and all the Parks team for the amazing job they did with the Founder's Parade. That was great. So, thank you.
Just as an aside, Rachel Sonier, Communications Director. But we have turned every stone as far as we have it on print and ads for Haysbury Press and Community Impact on every billboard in town that we have access to. And I will have road signs up hopefully this week. So, but yeah, definitely lots of social media advertisement as well.
Thank you so much.
I did see it on the billboard.
Rachel, will we be advertising it? Are we going to be recording the last one as well, so that way the residents can access it at their convenience?
So we won't be recording the second one, because it's not hybrid, and our public works facility room isn't really set up for it. But it will be come and go. We still have that first one available with the timestamp to get questions on the Kyle Bonds website, kylebonds.com, and also on our YouTube and on our city page as well.
Okay, are we displaying it on the Channel 10 as well?
Oh, I'll ask Grant about that. I'm not sure if he's been playing it on a loop or anything.
We could run it a couple of times throughout the day. It'd be great just to give everybody a chance, an opportunity to learn more about the bond, so they can make an educated guess here in November the 8th.
Definitely. No, I'll, we'll get that on Kyle 10 playing again. And Councilmember.
Thank you. Can we make sure, I've heard, I've had a couple of residents say that they have reached out with questions.
To the Kyle Bonds website, or?
Yes.
Okay.
And it's, they're not getting.
I will talk to gap strategies tomorrow and make sure that they are responding to residents' questions and anything like that, for sure.
I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, CIP Road Projects and Consent Agenda Presentation. I'm sorry, do you want to go ahead of this one? Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Leon Barba, City Engineer. And our engineering department is very proud of Kashav also, so. Laverde Park is about 71% complete. It's up from the last time about 3%. Most of the items they see on here that they're working on are the same thing from the last time, so I won't repeat those for you. The Public Safety Center is about 62% complete. It's about 1% above what it was the last time I presented. They're working on tape and float, the air handler units are being set. They're installing the chill water piping from the chillers to the building. They're painting electrical mechanical rooms. They're installing the lightweight cast stone cornice at the west side of the building, filled brick masonry on the east side of the building. And they're setting the main switchboard in the main electrical area and also working on the main entry soffit. They still plan to complete this by February 6, 2023. South Side Wastewater Improvements Project, we're still at 94% complete. We have a pay application in. We're waiting for them to update their schedule so we can wrap this project up and make their next payment. But that's why we're still at 94% complete. They have completed completed the wastewater line. It is in and done, so is the force main. They're being pressure tested. And then once they're pressure tested, we're going to start coating the manholes. And that means we're just about finished with this project. They did use some additional stabilized sand to fill the trenches. And where we had those in stable conditions, and as you would expect, that triggers another change order. So hopefully, this will be the last one, but we'll see. South Side Lift Station startup is, we're actually going to try to schedule that for a startup on October 27th. The wastewater treatment plant expansion project, the Dew Water Facility is 85% complete. They're still working on the Bullseye Plant Number One and trying to clean that up. As you recall, we did complete Plant Number Two, and that was operating very well. We had pushed the completion date on this to November 2022. We're also having supply chain delays with this feed pump delivery project. PEC has installed the power poles and the high voltage lines. That's done. They're waiting for the transformer to come in so they can go ahead and set that up so we can get power to the facility. The roads are being excavated so we can get those roads paved. The security fencing is going in around the perimeter. And due to time extension on the project, again, we're going to see some additional change orders from Black and Veatch and Burge-Sonypole. They're the engineering firms that have been watching this project for us. Elliot Branch Interceptor, we're about 74% complete. We're also expecting an update on their schedule. That's why we've held up on paying them. We still have some road closures. They are working on Sled Street. Reconstruction is continuing between J. Marius Lane and Third Street. There's some revin curbs been placed on Third Street between Scott Street and Grove Street, and we're still working with the residents in the area. Downtown relocation of overhead lines. Frontier has run into a problem. They need to get a permit from Union Pacific Railroad. As you all know, that takes time to get that done with Union Pacific, so we're hoping that they can get that wrapped up as quickly as possible. Old Post Road, the paving has been completed by the accounting. They're working on the backup, on the backfill and cleanup. And there's one more lift that's remaining on that project. Right now, we're having to revise the plans for some drainage and some that we need to work on near the Lauren Concrete Company and near the church.
Leon, just real quick, on that project, what are we looking at as far as pavement? And how is the paving going on that section?
The final lift is going to be done by the city, whether it's by contractor or in-house forces. So that's in agreement. That's the last thing that has to go in. Right now, we have three concrete driveways to place, and we have some curbing to put in. And again, we still need to work on the drainage. So we're working with Lauren Concrete to try to resolve that issue that we have on an easement with them. So we do have an alternate plan if that doesn't work through. So that's what we're working on right now.
Yeah, definitely. What are we looking as far as, how many inches are we responsible for on pavement? What are we looking as far as, how many inches are we responsible for on pavement?
Two inches.
Two inches?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Is it possible? I would like to take a tour of the current state just to put some eyes on it and see what it looks like. I don't know if I can do that with Harper sometime or if you're available.
I'm available.
Okay.
Yes, yes.
All right, I'll send you an email and we'll set that up.
Yeah, there was one thing that happened on the project that didn't surprise me. We, as you all know, we're in some heavy-duty clay out there and that structure that we have, there's about two foot thick. It's a lot of base and last four inches of hot mix on top of that. That's a very strong structure. What it's not strong for though is that material is strong in compression. It's not very strong in tension. And what we had happen on that first section that was done, because of the drought that we had, the soils around it started shrinking and we had some cracks in it. The county's going to come back and do some milling and put some more mix back in that. Will it solve the problem currently? I don't know that for sure. When 24 of the clay decides to move, you're not going to stop it. So that's the problem we have in that particular area of town. As you all know that, that's the east side. We have a lot of clay in that area. But the foundation is strong. It's not going to go anywhere with the lows that we anticipate going on that road. It's just the shrinkage that's caused by the drought that we have.
So I have a concern with that area in general because I get a lot of complaints from Post Oak. And I do understand that those roads are, they move and they're soft and it was old farming roads. The answer from the city can't be just to ignore it or bypass it. I drive down Old Post, or not Old Post, Post Oak, you know, Langley, all the time in order to get to 35. And those roads are in dire need of, not just like repair, but there's big divots in there. And so unfortunately, the city agreed to allow these roads to be built. And so it now becomes our responsibility. So do we have any kind of plan to obviously continuously update these roads so we don't have a bunch of miserable residents who feel like they're forgotten?
Councilmember, I've been in this business for almost 50 years and with other cities, east side of I-35 has always been a problem. I know there's been groups and committees that have been put together to try to fix the problem and make it not happen. I mean, they've looked at adding concrete to streets and tried to do that. And I remember once the vision, it was all concrete and it failed miserably. They just didn't do a good job of design or engineering or whatever, but it failed miserably. And so they've been out there repairing those concrete streets for a long time. You can go down, some of the solutions that I've seen are very drastic. I mean, you're looking at going four feet deep to remove that soil and try to replace it with soils and putting French drains and all kinds of things in there. But at some point, it gets too expensive to develop at that point. Then nobody wants to build in that area. So what you try to do is you try to build a structure that's going to hold for at least, hopefully, 20 years, but you've got to do maintenance on it. If you don't do maintenance, then it doesn't get better. They never get better. They always get worse. And so the longer you let it sit out there and do it, don't do it. There's different techniques that you can do to keep it in decent shape. Will it be the perfect road that you had before? No, it never will be. It'll always have your dips and your rises or whatever and some cracking, so you crack seal. That's the best you can do. That's all we have today to help that situation. I don't know if I've answered your question or not, but it's a tough decision. A lot of engineers I've talked to are a lot smarter than I am about pavements. And we talk and we talk and I ask them, what's, how are we going to solve this? And the answer is always, let's go down really deep, let's put a lot of French drains, let's do all these moisture barriers and that. And at that point, it just becomes too expensive. You can't build a road like that. And even Techside has problems. It's 150, that one section of 150. I watched the bill that years ago. They put a lot of linemen in it, they did a lot of work on it. And today, it's the up and down on 150, Section 150. There's other roads that I've seen, they're just, cracks are wide open on those things. It's routine maintenance. You have to figure out, but routine maintenance is not cheap. We all know that.
No, I completely understand that. The problem is, is the answer that I give to my residents can't be it's too expensive. But what I can tell them hopefully is it's on some kind of agenda to get fixed. So if you can, I'll just send you an email if we can figure out the last time that they've worked in Post Oak and maybe a tentative plan to, in the future, even if I can tell them, hey, it's going to be, you know, July of next year, I got to give them something. I can't just say, you know, sorry, that's just the land that it was built on. So I would like to get some kind of update and be able to provide those residents with some reassurance.
Councilmember, we did a study of the Post Oak subdivision about five years ago, I think, and paid one of the consultants to do that study and they had recommendations in there. Unfortunately, we just never did follow up on them. Budget, we just didn't put it in our budget to make those improvements. Some are as simple as doing what we call a level up, just filling in the low spots and then trying to make it smooth again. Others, crack seal or actually take out sections, just try to go down 12 inches or 18 inches or 24 inches and try to rebuild it. And that takes time and money. But there are solutions.
Okay, thank you.
Indian Paintbrush Lift Station, we're about 13% complete. This project's going well. The wall's been installed and the wet well. There's a bypass that's been installed. And the reason we've installed that bypass is so we can do this pipe bursting process. They're supposed to start this week on that. It's a very, not an unusual process. We've just never done it here in Kyle, so I'm hoping to get out tomorrow and see what, how it looks. So anyway, that's something new for us. The consent agenda items, we have the downtown relocation of the overhead communication lines. Charter Spectrum is asked to be paid for relocating some of the overhead communication lines. Item number 12, that's a change order for LJA. H.E.R. is a consultant, a subconsultant that works for them. They have done their assessment. They've identified an area that is suitable for the Golden Cheek Whobbler in the area where we're putting our water line. So they're going to submit an application to the Hayes County Regional Habitat Conservation Plan so that we can streamline our process for getting approvals to continue working on our water line. And that's all I have. Any questions?
To follow up on that Golden Cheek Whobbler, I know they're seasonal. I know we can work with, throughout certain parts of the season. So what, do you know what the dates are for that?
They told me, I don't remember those dates.
Okay, but I know that there's a season that we can work
Yes, sir.
without study because
You're absolutely right.
they're migratory boards. But the other thing is, Third Street, do we know a finalization date for the projects area?
I asked the project manager today and they said about a couple of months to wrap up everything because we still need to clean up and just make, and do a punch through, punch list for everything. So I'm thinking no more than two months.
Let's make sure we make that punch list and we try to put the people's property back to its original state in those areas. Those people had to deal with a lot in the last couple of months, so anything we can do to make their lives a little better, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Leon.
All right. Thank you, Leon.
Thank you.
All right. Does anybody have any items they want to pull from consent?
I just had a comment for number nine already.
I'd love to, oh no, wait up, we've got to go to Hirsch real quick before we go to consent.
Well, I figured we would take yours at the top of considerable action where he goes.
Do you have some for this? Did you want to pull anything else? Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve consent agenda items nine through 16. Excluding 15?
Second.
All right. The motion is to approve consent agenda items nine through 16 excluding 15. Is there discussion on that motion?
I just want to make a real quick comment on number nine. Just where that stoplight is, if Harper can hear me. If you look at the stoplight that's going towards 35, one of the Fisars is bent on the green light. You know which one I'm talking about?
Yes, sir. Scott Egbert for the record. Over the weekend, somebody hit that and the guys came out to adjust it. So they are currently working on getting that replaced.
Okay, I was wondering if you was part of the construction when that truck hit that. Okay. Just wanted somebody to be aware because I was driving and I saw it, it's like you can't even see it, so.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Next up is the agenda item 15, approve Plum Creek Phase Two, Section Five Preliminary Plan. 101.7 acres, 421 single-family lots, 13 open space lots located at the western extension of Etheridge. This item was pulled by Councilmember Parsley.
Although my iPad is not loading. Okay, perfect. I do have a question and I don't know if we'll, oh, there you are. I forgot. So I was reviewing the plans and let me see if I can go to the right section. It seems to me that the width of the roads is about 50, but I see that there are two parking aisles in it. And so will that allow for the 20 minimum requirement for the fire apparatus, for fire trucks to go through? The total, yes.
You're looking at the cross-section?
Let me tell you.
So this cross? Go ahead.
Let me try to pull, if you go to the preliminary plan, I just need to find the page. Sorry, my iPad is just really giving.
Yes, ma'am, it should be page four.
And I will tell you what page it is.
Yes, ma'am, it should be page 16.
I'm trying to locate that page. Give me one second. All right. So it says 50, it shows that the roads are about 50 feet wide, but it shows that there are two parking spaces on each side. So is there going to be double parking?
Yes.
Will that allow for?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, so the, if you look just under where it says 50 feet row, there's a, it says 33 feet face of curb to face of curb for a, and this is from what we've been told by the fire department several times. Regardless of what that cross-section right there says, the minimum that face of curb to face of curb in width that the fire department needs to have both sides for parking and two fire trucks to pass is 32 feet face of curb to face of curb, which is what the FOC means. So they count six-foot parallel spaces against the curb as a space. And so in reality, even though it's labeled as eight feet right there and a 17-foot driveline and then another eight-foot parking aisle, there's enough room in there per fire code.
Okay, that was my only concern because I saw the 17 in here and I assumed that the minimum was 20 for it if we were going to have parking in both sides. So I guess that's my question.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, there's plenty of room there.
Okay. I would like to approve item 15.
Motion by Councilmember Parsley, seconded by Mayor Protim Rizzo. Is there discussion on the motion? The motion is to approve item 15. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries six to zero. All right, next up, agenda item number 34, discussion of possible action regarding the City of Kyle's open records request and release policies and procedures, including but not limiting to Chapter Two, Article Four, Division Two Code of Ethics, Subdivision Six, Section Two, 251B of the City's Code of Ordinance. Councilmember Forster.
All right, thank you. So on June 22nd, on June 16th, 22 of this year, I requested all financial disclosures for all council to include addendums from the city. I was informed by Jennifer that financial disclosures are available for inspection in her office by appointment. I was provided two links, one to the city's ordinance regarding record keeping, Section 2-251 Financial Disclosure Report, Letter B, which refers, references record keeping and reads accordingly. Financial disclosure reports, notwithstanding the city's population, shall be maintained in accordance with the VTCA Local Government Code 145.007. The second link was to Local Government Code, Section 145.007, which has five parts. The parts, the part that concerns me is Letter A, which states, "Financial statements filed under this chapter are public record. The clerk or secretary of the municipality shall maintain the statements in separate alphabetical files in a manner that is accessible to the public during regular office hours." Then on Tuesday, September 27th, council received an email regarding a charge from the city to a public information requestor returning to obtaining public information campaign finance reports. It was at that time that I realized the city does not provide this information online as well. I understand a cost for readily available information. However, when requestors don't have access to that information, I find it hard to justify a change. In my pursuit to continue to bring transparency to the city, I would like to see Section 2-21, 251B of the city's ordinance regarding financial disclosures reports deleted until the city reaches the required population. And that requirement of population is in Section 145 dot zero zero one, applicability of this chapter. This chapter applies only to a municipality with a population of 100,000 or more. I am open for questions.
Anybody have any questions for Councilmember Forster?
Yes, Forster, I have a question.
Councilmember Tobias.
Okay, so to clarify, you're saying that, that open requests, certain type of financial open requests can only be done over a population of 100,000?
So the ordinance that the city has decided to adopt is a local government code. That local government code is only applicable to cities with a population of 100,000 or more. In our ordinance, it states financial disclosures, notwithstanding the city's population, shall be maintained in accordance with the VTCA. So we don't necessarily have to adopt this code, but somewhere along the line, council has chosen to do that. My concern is, A, I think by not putting this information online and making it readily available, it causes a lot more work for the city. And I think it would be a little bit more transparent if the city decided to place all that information online, as does the county and other surrounding cities.
Do you know when, when did that ordinance get passed? Or when, you said an ordinance, a city ordinance?
Yeah, I believe it passed in 2017. So it was not too long ago.
So an ordinance was passed to say that any type of financial records to be openly available would only be until the population's over 100,000?
Okay, so I guess to just kind of make it simple, as it currently stands, our ordinance requires us to go into the city's secretary's office to look at any financial reports. And none of them are online. The city isn't required by law to do that, by state law, but they have adopted an ordinance that does require that.
That's all, yep. And how it works, I mean, I guess if somebody wants to look at my financial records, that they would have to schedule an appointment to come see it if you're available or if anybody's available and.
Right, so, okay, firstly, the Public Information Act request, that was for campaign finance, which is not covered under the Ethics Code. The Ethics Code only covers financial disclosure reports, which are required annually for department heads, city manager, there's a list, and the city council. Those are maintained for the purpose of financial transparency for our Ethics Code that, it asks multiple questions about who you work for, who you've gotten money from, what property do you own, those kind of things, for transparency purposes. The open records request that came in was for financial campaign finance reports, which is separate and it was handled by Public Information Act. And so they're two separate ideas. The idea of putting all the city's department heads and council members' financial disclosure reports that also list all of our family members and all those things, putting those on the website would be, in my opinion, too much information to put out there. And that is why the Ethics Code requires an inspection only so that our, there's a balance between transparency to the public and also maintaining people's personal information.
Can I ask if financial statement reports are the same throughout the state or are they different with the city?
So our ordinance adopted two forms, one's a long form and one's a short form. And I don't know, I think it originally came from our prior city attorney and we developed that further during this adoption of this amendment in 2017. And we developed that further during this adoption of this amendment in 2017. I don't know that it's a state form at all, I think it's a City of Kyle form.
Can that maybe be tweaked? Because I know the county keeps their financial statements online as well. And so if they do it, I guess I'm just confused as to why, as a city, it would be hard for us.
So when that public information request came in, those were for campaign finance, and I think it was determined that multiple cities published their campaign finance reports. These financial disclosures are quite a bit different than campaign finance.
Yeah, no, for me, it's all about transparency on both behalves. So I do understand there's two issues there. I would like to, are either one of them currently online at all?
Yes.
Are any one of those reports, or do they stay online permanently?
The financial disclosures?
Either the campaign or the financial disclosures.
Well, they're different.
Yeah, I'm asking if either one of them are available online.
The campaign finance reports are available online at this time. Once we did the redactions to them, I just try not to put everybody's home addresses out on our websites for all, you know, for forever.
If we can, yeah, if we can update that form though, to remove that information, I think-
The forms, the campaign finance reports are from the Ethics Commission, and we cannot, that's the state Ethics Commission, and we can't modify the form to not-
Okay, what about the other financial reports?
Those are, they're practically fully confidential already. There's a back page that, I mean, it's up to the filler outer. If they put that information on the publicly available first four pages, then it's there. And that's why it's there for inspection. But otherwise, that information is protected under the Public Information Act about home addresses, people's family members, those kind of things, and that's specifically what that financial disclosure report is recording.
But you said that's a form that the city made? Okay, so can, is there anything that we can do to redact that information or not have that information on there? I think, I'm not trying to put everybody's information out there, that is not my goal. Nobody here wants that, nobody. But what we do want to show, or I want to show at least, is any kind of income that has come in, any kind of financial monetary gain that we've had while we're in office, or while we are campaigning. And I think we should be able to see that for a couple years, right? Because I think as of right now, it kind of goes away after the campaign. The state does not require that. The city does. So I guess my question is, if other cities, or if the county is doing that, why can't the city provide that same transparency?
Okay, so one of the things for, in our office, is that the retention period for these financial disclosures is two years after the separation date. So for all these department heads that have been here for 20 years, you know, there's quite a packet of information there. For, you know, a council member, if you serve for three years and then you're gone, we still have it for five years, and so I think it would be important to establish what information you want posted, and for how long you want it on the website versus our retention schedule.
So that two years, that is actually in Section 145.001, is that the state?
We follow the Texas State Library and Archives Commission retention schedule for government records.
Okay, so is that two years included in that?
That two years is provided in Local Government 147 dot 00.
Okay, so what I'm saying is if we, if we didn't abide by that, which we're not required to by state statute, because we are a population of under 100,000, if we removed that, then that would give us, the city, the opportunity to post at least, you know, any kind of financial information, which I think our residents and other people should be able to obtain without coming in and making an appointment with city staff.
Okay, so as far as the retention goes, retention is just how long we have a copy, any copy. So it doesn't, there's nothing anywhere that requires us to post it to the website. So what I'm saying is if you want it posted to the website, and you want it posted there for some certain amount of time, perhaps your Ethics Ordinance Amendment could contain those instructions separately.
But they'd have to, each council member would have that choice, is that what you're saying, or does it have to be uniform all the way across?
It would be out, the problem with it is that, once a year, we have to put out, we have to file this form, right? It tells who you work for, who your family members are, everything else like that. So it gives addresses, it gives a lot of information. Unfortunately, as an elected official, you always got a target on your back, so you don't want your family information out there, right? So that's one of the things, we protect that, right? So, but when it comes to who you work for, they can come in and investigate that, and come to the office and take a look at it. The problem with putting the job, putting everybody's jobs out there, so this job that we have here is part-time, right? The full-time job is the one that sustains our families and everything else. Unfortunately, there's people out there that would probably take advantage of that information, and probably if they get upset with you on a vote or something, would probably come after you and your real job. That's something we've got to protect is our real jobs, because that's really what maintains our family. This is a part-time job here. This is what we do for service for our community. That's where I worry about it, now, having the campaign reports out there, I'm in favor of having that out there, having it on the website, because that's something that we're, you know, signing up for when it comes to campaigning, making sure that we're transparent when we're campaigning. It's the once-a-year one that has your job, has your family members, everything else. I mean, we've all had, you know, people threaten us in some capacity, so having your family's information out there is probably not a good idea. We all have children, we all have spouses, so it's probably, that's the one that I would deter from. But having the campaign report would probably be something that I could get behind having there longer. Right now, it's out there, I mean, it's on the internet. If you want to look it up, it's on the internet. We just got done, the people running for office right now just did their 30-day finance reports, hopefully they did them. But anyway, they're out there, and people can see them online, you know, so they're, it's, that's something you can do without an open records request, it's already online. If its council's wish to keep them on longer, I think I'd be okay with that.
I can understand the the protection part of of the family member and so forth. But I do also, but I also feel that if you are going to run for an office and you are an elected official, you do have to put yourself out there. You do have to be honest of your work profession. And enlisted, enlisted, to know this is the person that you are, and where you work and so forth, and even if you're campaigning and so forth, and this is where I work, this is what I do, it's out there. So, I guess my thing is, is that I just kind of wanted to follow up to say about the, now I have a better understanding about why we do it, because I know when it comes to that yearly where we got to do the financial report, I'm always questioning, you know, like, oh, do I need to do it, or am I doing it wrong? You know, I just want to make sure I'm correct on my, on my verbiage there, on my documentation. So that kind of answers that question there. I don't have a problem listing where I work and so forth, and the address and so forth. My only thing, my only question I have, Ms. Holmes, is that when it comes to, if somebody wants to file a open records request, could you just briefly give us the steps of how the process works? And if there's a certain type of timeline that specific requests are needed, whether it's financial, or if it's just, you know, I need to gather emails, or whatever it is, and so forth, to just give the public an idea of how the procedure works?
Okay, so for Public Information Act request, we have an online portal, it's called GovQA, and it's, you can get to it through our website. When those come in, they get, like, the requestor can choose a department for it to go to, and sometimes they choose not the correct department, and so we'll reassign it. It goes through the process of the staff member providing the responsive documents. And then my staff reviews it for any confidential information. If it's over 50 pages, there's certain provisions in the Public Information Act that allow the city to recoup certain fees for producing that information and for gathering that information. For example, like, if we are running computer, like, email server searches, that is really time-consuming, and if it's more than 50 pages and we have to do a bunch of redactions, which generally we do because, like, for example, public email addresses of members of the public, their email addresses are confidential. So any kind of emails, we'd be having to look through for redactions and things like that. If it meets those qualifications, we will send a cost estimate letter. The Public Information Act requires us to, if it's more than $40. My office, if we were going to charge anything, even if it's less than $40, we still would send a notification that there's a fee associated, and let them decide whether they want it or not. Or if they want to reduce the scope of their request, then they could do that to where it'd be less than 50 pages, and then we would have to do the redactions for free.
That kind of answers some of the questions I've had from residents in the past. You know, does the city charge, or the city doesn't charge? But you kind of explained that it does take a lot of work, and there's a certain type of parameter to where it's like, if it's 50 pages or above, that, you know, you can be required to ask for some kind of additional fees for it and so forth. And I can understand, it can be time-consuming to make sure you don't get everybody's Yahoo or email or Google address, because it would be out there for the public, so. Those are the only questions that I have, referencing on how the procedure works.
Can we also, can you also describe the process if somebody wants to view a financial report?
For the financial disclosure reports, those are available in my office under lock and key. And so if somebody wanted to see them, they can make an appointment. They can come in, and there's a list of things that I have to put in the file, that this person, their name, they came to look at this report on this date and time, and who they're representing. There may be some other requirements, I review it every time somebody asks me about it. But it's part of that 145.007.
Okay, so that's part of the statute that the city doesn't have to, but we do adopt that statute?
It's in our ordinance, so staff does have to-
But the actual law states that, not until a city reaches a population of 100,000. Is it required by state?
Our ordinance says, notwithstanding whatever the city's population is.
So that, so my whole point is to bring it here to try to change that, or adjust it at least. For the record, I have never been threatened, so I don't quite understand that. As far as the form that the city chooses to use, and it has children's names in it, is that, like, is that a requirement? Is that something that we could take off, or jobs, and redact it? Is there a way that we can change these forms? So, when, because I'm gonna be honest, I could look up everybody here that owns a home and find out where they live. It's simple, it's free information, and it's on Hays Cat. If people are really worried about that, they're in trouble. I could also go to a LinkedIn and figure out where people work. So, I'm not trying to focus on the what-ifs, and that I've never, you know, experienced that. I am trying to bring just a little bit of more transparency regarding any money I make, or any money that I get in, to the residents, so they are aware, so they know.
So as far as children, and so it requires your parents, who your parents work for, your adult children, who they work for. And I think that that's all part of the keeping the standard of ethics high, so that if, you know, someone's parent's employer is coming in, doing business with the city, that it's written down somewhere, and that person should recuse themselves, that kind of thing. That's the purpose of including that information in this report. And because it's so sensitive, that's also why, if somebody wants to see it, they absolutely can come and see it, but under these parameters.
Can anybody take a picture of it, if they wanted to, or is that not allowed?
I couldn't hear you.
If somebody wanted to come in to look at the reports, can they take a picture of it?
No.
Or they, okay. Okay.
Because if they did, then I couldn't keep track of who's seen the report.
So I guess, just my overall concern is, do we have to have these forms so inclusive of all this information? Like, by law, do we have to do that?
Respond to that question. Page 10, City Attorney, for the record. The financial disclosure form that the city has currently is just a creature of city ordinance. There's not a state law requirement under your current population for a financial disclosure. You have one because you've adopted an ethics ordinance that requires it.
Okay, so the form can be adjusted to just include, you know, money that we've received, or maybe, I filled it out, I'm not super detailed. I can't imagine that there's a lot of information coming and going, but what little information we could put out there, I think is going to only benefit the city and the residents in building trust. So, can we adjust the form to, to maybe not include, well, can we adjust the form, is my main question?
It's within council's discretion to modify the form.
Okay.
The only thing with doing that, is that now you take out some of the safeguards that were put in place, and that's knowing who the parents were, who they work for. So those things were put in place, so that way, there's no one taking advantage of the city. Maybe somebody's parent worked somewhere. So now, you're actually, instead of helping, it actually hinders, because now we don't know what the history there is. I'm just putting it out there.
No, no, I understand, that's why I tried to bring a conflicts check to the city, to actually increase that transparency as well. Because we can write whatever we want, we don't have to write our parents' name down. If we are not going to be truthful and honest, and it's not, it's just not, to me, it doesn't make sense. If I'm going to abuse that, I'm just simply not going to write my mom's, or my sister's, or my daughter's name down. I feel like we could adjust this form to make it easier for us to fill out, and to provide the minimal information that the residents need to fill, to be okay with that information out there. I don't think it has to have children's name, I don't think it has to have employer, because when I filled it out, I didn't put the exact name of my employer. So, how much information is really going out there?
Okay, we're gonna-
I just had a question. How often do we get requests to review these documents per year?
Very rarely.
How often do we get complaints that they're not available online?
This is the first time.
Thank you.
I also wanted to just add that, you know, I think we're speaking of the financial disclosure reports as if they are reports required of the seven of us, but the reality is, we are only a percentage of who fills out those reports. And so while we may be more willing to have our information put out there, we have to consider this not just from the standpoint of whether any of us individually would want that information to be published, but also whether that's what we are requiring. We want our department heads to write down their parents' name and who their parents work for, and post that online or not. And so we're actually, you know, a small portion of that, so. I really do agree about the idea of having campaign finance reports posted online, which is why anytime you're involved in a campaign, which is really the majority of the time that we post our reports, or campaign to raise and spend money. I like having those posted online, and would be a fan of having the council's campaign finance reports posted online permanently, so long as while we're in office. So to me, that's something we can do, if you're wanting transparency, that's an element of transparency that makes sense, because we already do that when you're in a campaign. But as it relates to putting the financial disclosure reports and changing our policies from what it's currently standing, I personally don't support that, for the reasons that the city secretary stated. But I do support putting our campaign finance reports online, so.
Would you support at least taking that information off? Even if we keep it private, like, I don't think it's necessary to have your kids' names on there? I would like to change the form, so it's not so, A, so tedious.
But there is, the reason for having the detailed information that's not made, that's not publicized, is so that there can be a conflicts check and a record, because family members and immediate family members could stand a personal gain from various transactions, you want there to be some kind of record, so.
Maybe minors. All I'm saying is, I understand what you're saying. But at the same time, we could adjust the form to be more transparent, and that seems to be a no. So, I don't understand, you're saying this is the reason why we shouldn't, and we have this conflict.
Well, if the goal is transparency, if you're advocating to remove required information just to publish it online, when that information is available to the public through a process, you're not increasing transparency, you're increasing convenience and publicity, but you're not increasing transparency. The publishing of the campaign finance reports would increase, it wouldn't increase transparency, because they are also available through open records requests for anyone who wants to see, but by putting those online, you are allowing for people to see that at any given point in time. And so, I just-
But people can still come in and see your kid's name, right? I mean, we're not saying, no, we're just making it a little bit harder. So, and when I say harder, I mean for me, and I'm a council member, and I wanted to know what the financial information for all of us was, and I had to make an appointment with Jennifer, which I could never do, because I work in Austin and I have to drive here, so for me, it was really frustrating that I couldn't have access to it. So it's, I can't even imagine how a resident would feel if they wanted that same information. I mean, hours between 8:00 and 5:00 is not realistic. I mean, hours between eight and five is not realistic for people to obtain information when most people work between those hours.
Councilor Brett Cho. I, I think we've all spoken, so let's, if you want, you know, I, I would personally support the campaign finance reports being posted online, the financial disclosure reports being posted online that include staff. I don't support personally. So I think we've discussed it though. So if we want to vote on it, we can vote on it and find out.
So yeah, I would, whatever I can get. I want to make a motion to direct staff to post all campaign financial reports online. Now, is this gonna, sorry, I don't, I gotta ask a question to Jennifer or to, to Paige. Those finance campaign reports, is that affected by the population of a hundred thousand?
I'm not aware of it being affected by that.
Okay, I'll go ahead and just make the motion without that then. A motion to direct staff to post all campaign finance reports online for seven years?
While the office holder is in office.
While they're in office, yes.
All right, motion by Councilor Floris Kales, seconded by Mayor Proton Rizzo that we direct staff to post all office holders' campaign finance reports online while they're in office. Is there a discussion on that motion? Holdings in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. Six to zero, sorry. Creature of habit.
Couple more weeks.
All right.
If I can ask for clarification because those campaign finance reports, our retention schedule is only two years. So do you mean to keep only the most recent two years on for the duration or is it?
Two years after the person has left.
No, she's saying that you don't keep them after two years. So I figured they were available forever, but they're not.
I guess while, while they're in office, I think what they were talking about, if somebody ran for office and, so if somebody ran for office and they didn't get elected, what are we gonna do there?
They're not in office.
Three years after that.
Yeah, so we just let them go away?
The best way to handle it would be for each council member to have their own page, their own bio page. And underneath everyone's, if you're an existing council member, you'd have a bio page and underneath that would be all the campaign finance reports you've ever filed. So while in office and while running for office. And then if you're gone, you no longer have that page and then the records are no longer published.
So you want me to keep them longer than the two years? Because right now, like, that's all we have is the last two years.
Twenty-four months should be good. Well, okay.
Can we just do this going forward? Like going forward effective today?
That's what I'm asking.
Oh, yes, yes. I, I would like, yeah, in the, I guess in my motion, I would like to make it effective today, moving forward.
So we can publish them while the person is in office, correct? Once the person is not in office, the campaign finances go. Is that?
Yeah, I think, I think the direction was for while they're in office. So that, I think that motion language will allow for you to change policy and I, I understand you only have two years as of now, but moving forward, as long as we're in office, you'll just keep adding until they're removed and not destroyed. All right. Next up, item number seventeen, consideration of possible action related to a resolution, approving a resolution by the Board of Directors of the Alliance Regional Water Authority, authorizing the issuance of contract revenue bonds for the city of Kyle, Texas in connection with the regional water supply contract project and other related matters, including presentation regarding finance and project updates. Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mayor.
Do I need to, there we go. Mayor, council, thank you very much. I should have a presentation. I'm not sure how to get to it with your new system here.
Just, just wave your hand in the air.
I have some powers. I don't have that kind of power, trust me.
Yes.
While that's pulling up, this is just a presentation giving you an update on our project to date, what we're working on. There we go. And then teeing up the resolution that's before you for consideration and action after the meeting or as part of this meeting. So if we go to the, the next slide, it's our overall project map that shows, sure. There we go. That shows our overall system and the new water supply that we're developing. On the right side is our well field and the Carrizo aquifer and water treatment plant that is currently under construction. And then we have five different pipeline segments to deliver that treated water to all of our customers. In the middle, kind of where the pipeline split is a booster pump station that we call the Maxwell Booster Pump Station where we re-pressurize that water to, to be able to send it on to the customers. We have lines down to the south and to the west that serve some of the Canyon Regional Water Authority customers and an elevated storage tank on that alignment. And then to the north, we have segment C, which is where Kyle will receive its water and tie onto the system. And we have an elevated storage tank in this part of the system too, to provide additional storage and redundancy in the system if we were to have a power outage. We currently have two locations for delivery of the water to Kyle. We started with the FM sixteen twenty-six booster pump station by the HEB. And then there's been a second delivery point added as part of ongoing project that you're looking at more on the southeastern side of your town. So we're gonna be able to tap and provide water at that location as well to serve that portion of your system. We'll go to the next slide. This is a measles chart that we update to kind of show you the overall, where we're at in the development of our projects. We have nine different construction projects that are moving forward. As indicated in that top line, the well field construction project is complete. I'll show you some pictures of that. We're making good progress on the water treatment plant, the booster pump station and segments A and B. We recently awarded the segment D contract to S.J. Lewis Construction and so they will start getting in the field and actively starting that work in November and then we'll move forward. Segment E is currently out for bids right now. We are set to, to receive those bids on November fourteenth. We're anxious to get that under contract. And then segment C, as I mentioned, the, the pipeline that comes through Kyle, we're finalizing our easement acquisition, our environmental approval through that process and we expect to have that out to bid in the early part of 2023 and start construction thereafter. And the elevated storage tanks are basically on that same pathway. I wanted to provide you with a, a few updates on the construction. So if we'll go to the next few slides, I'll show you some of the, the work that's been ongoing here and what the financing you've already approved has gone towards. So we have four different wells on the project in this phase, the Carrizo wells. The right side there shows the screens. These are about a thousand to twelve hundred foot deep wells. We've used stainless steel for the construction of that. The Carrizo water naturally is pretty aggressive and so we're using a material that can withstand that and hold up to that for the longer term. I'm happy to report that all four of those wells have met the quality of water that we expected and the quantity of water that we expected. So that's good news. Those are in place. If we continue then down for the water treatment plant, in December 2017, we purchased about seven hundred and sixty acres of property. It contains our first four wells as well as the site for the water treatment plant. It affords us a lot of opportunity to expand that plant into the future and, and probably still have some additional land more than we need. And at some point in time, our board may direct us to carve that off and sell that to make for a different use of that. But we're not at that point in time, we're ready to make that decision yet. So if we move down to the next slide, it shows a rendering for the water treatment plant. And so after construction is completed, this is roughly what we hope it will look like. We have two water storage tanks on the right side. Those are each for raw water. We have partnered with the Guadalupe Blanco River Authority for the treatment and transmission of this water. So we each have a raw water tank that our individual well fields will pump into. Then immediately downstream of that, the waters blend together into the chemical mixing area and then the water by gravity flows into the building you see there where we have filters in place to filter the water, filter out the particulate. Then it goes through into the clear well there, the large tank you see kind of in the, the middle of the screen. And then finally, our pumps on the just left side of that screen where we'll pump that water out to our customers. So that shows what the rendering's supposed to look like. Now I'll show you some construction photos of what the entire site looks like. You can see in the upper left, you see the tanks there. Those are basically complete, the two million gallon clear well on the bottom side and the two one million gallon tanks up there in the, in the background of that picture. On the bottom left are the pumps that are being installed. We have numerous different pumps on the site. So six of those are our high service pumps to boost that water as it leaves the site. We have two plant water pumps for use of water internally, including for fire use if necessary and our own internal uses. And then three backwash pumps. We've got to clean those filters routinely so that they maintain their performance. And so we have three dedicated pumps for that. So those are, are pretty significant features of the site. You see that in the bottom left. In the upper right, I mentioned the filters earlier. You could see those, those metal containers that are sitting on the concrete right now. Those are the six filters that are installed in this phase. The building will be built around that here by the end of the year as they continue forward with that process. It was easier for them to put those in place and build the building around it versus having the building and then trying to slide them in. And then the bottom right just kind of again shows you the overall site. You could see the, the amount of activity that's ongoing during the construction of this. I'm happy to report that we're just crossing the fifty percent completion of this project. So they are on schedule to be substantially complete in September of next year and then turn it over to us for operation in November of next year. So Archer Western Construction's doing a fabulous job for us out there. We'll continue down then to the next slide, give you an update on our Maxwell Booster Pump Station. We purchased about fifty acres in the area of Maxwell, again, to, to house some of our booster pump station there. And then continuing down, it's not quite as impressive of a site as the water treatment plant, not quite as much going on, but still important activities. There in the middle, we have a five million gallon ground storage tank. So that's a very large tank to receive that water and, and give us some additional storage through time. And then the upper right, again, like we talked about on the last slides with the high service pumps, these are two different pump stations, one to pressurize the, the water to the north, one to pressurize the water to the south. Luckily from this location and part of the reason we selected it is we can flow from gravity from this five million gallon storage tank to the San Marcos delivery point. So we only need the two different pump station setups. And then the bottom right is the electrical generator pad. All of our facilities will have electrical backup generation. So if we lose power, that we, we can continue to run as long as we keep diesel coming out there to those electrical generators. Continuing on, show you a few photos of some of the pipeline construction that's underway. This is, segment A is the first pipeline segment as it leaves the water treatment plant and heads to Lockhart. It is a forty-eight inch diameter pipeline. So it's a good sized pipeline, not something we can go get at Home Depot, a little bit more special, specialized than that. On the upper right, you can barely make out, it's, it's a steel pipeline covered in polyurethane coating. That's the yellow you see around that pipeline. That'll provide enhanced protection of the pipeline as it continues forward. On the bottom left, we have to cross under Plum Creek. And so that is a receiving shaft for the tunneling operations that will go under Plum Creek. That, that is a forty foot diameter tunnel and about fifty feet deep. We'll have one similar on the other side and then they will connect the two underneath Plum Creek and then tie that together. And then the bottom right shows the linear nature of the, the construction as goes along. All that's contained within our permanent easement so that they continue forward. And it'll also, with the easements that we're acquiring at this point, it allows us to add a second pipeline in that easement when the time comes. It also allows our partner, G B R A, to add a third pipeline in that easement. One of the other benefits is we really don't have to have many temporary construction easements when the time comes to build those other pipelines. We can contain that all within the ninety feet that we're getting right now. So while the easement acquisition process is, is a challenge, getting those easements now will really benefit us for the long term, many decades to come as we need additional supplies into the region as it's forecasted to be required. And then finally, segment B pipeline, this is the pipeline that leaves from the Maxwell Booster Pump Station to San Marcos. It's a slightly smaller line. It's a thirty-six inch diameter. You see the blue coating there. It's just made by a different pipe manufacturer. It's still a steel pipe, just a different color that they use for their polyurethane coating. And so you can see the, the work that's ongoing there to install that pipeline appropriately. I've mentioned a couple of these challenges already. Easement acquisition, we've had to get about three hundred different easements. So negotiating those and working through that with the property owners has been quite a challenge. We've had some challenges with some of the environmental clearance, particularly with the Corps of Engineers and getting the archaeological approvals for the project. We are almost complete with that, not quite. We look forward to that day passing. That's been a, a little bit more of a challenge than what we had projected and anticipated it would be. We've heard others around the state have the same issues. So it's just something that's currently happening now in the state with those approvals. And then finally, and really the reason I'm here tonight is because of the cost opinions. When we started this project, we've had some unfortunate increases in costs related to it. I'm sure as you're aware, and me and the projects y'all are probably moving forward with, material and labor costs have increased significantly over the last couple of years. Land prices have also increased. And so our, we've end up now with higher estimates than what we started and what we originally budgeted for. So that's why we're back here before you tonight to ask your approval for some additional financing so that we can complete the projects that we've discussed on the chart today. So a few more details here then on the funding. We, for this phase of the project, we've issued three different tranches of debt already in twenty seventeen, twenty nineteen, and twenty twenty. This year in twenty twenty-two, we're asking for, in total from Alliance, forty-eight million. Kyle's portion of that is thirteen point five two million. So bringing Kyle's portion to about eighty-one and a quarter million dollars for the issuance. We are continuing to utilize the Texas Water Development Board and the State Water Implementation Fund of Texas, the SWIFT funding. We'll go down to the next slide. The, the benefits of that funding is that we get to borrow at the state's credit and then we, they subsidize a little bit below that to get projects like this going forward. They understand the need to have water projects developed to, to help the, the state continue to, to grow. The, in the previous years, twenty seventeen through twenty twenty, we had historic low interest rates during that timeframe. I think when we came and talked to you, we, we noted that those rates were low. Unfortunately, we've not been as lucky this time around. Interest rates are up and so the, the budgeted rate we had for this, starting about a year ago, was three point five seven percent. By the time the Water Development Board sold the bonds earlier this month, it was right after another Fed rate hike, that interest rate with the subsidy was up to three point nine five percent. So slightly higher than what we had estimated and what was included in our budget for this next year. We already have planned an interest only payment as part of this debt issuance. That's already built into our budget. Because of the interest rate, that price is a little bit higher. We have some additional funds that are already reserved in those bond reserve funds. And so our technical committee has recommended to the board that we not adjust the budget, that we go ahead and cover those costs for this year so there would not be a budget amendment and then we can just match up to the future payments as we move forward. That'll go to our board on October thirty-first for their action. So this should not have any impact to this year's budget for the city. And then what that looks like in terms of the actual adjustments, we had budgeted three hundred and forty thousand in the interest only payment. Because of the higher interest rate, that's going to be three hundred and eighty-three thousand. Again, that amount will be already covered in the reserve fund that we have is, is the recommendation to our board. And then over the remaining twenty-nine years, those interest rates have caused those individual payments to be higher to the tune of just under a million dollars total in additional interest for the same amount borrowed. So we're here before you tonight to ask for your approval of the resolution. We are seeking approval from all of our entities. We've had three other meetings tonight to gain some of those approvals. So appreciate you accommodating us on, on this agenda tonight. Assuming this is approved, it will come to our board on October thirty-first for their consideration. And then we will look to close on those funds by Thanksgiving. And as I noted, we would have our first interest only payment made in August of twenty-three. Last thing I'll say is I'm joined here tonight by our Bond Counsel, Carol Palumbo, and our Financial Advisor, Jennifer Ritter with Specialized Public Finance. They've been through these documents, they've helped us through this entire process. I want to thank them for their effort. And that's all I have. Happy to answer any questions and we are happy to, to answer any questions you have with regards to the resolutions as well.
Thank you, Graham. Does anybody have any questions?
Mayor.
Mayor Proton.
Yeah, just real quick, you're, I was looking at your chart and it looked like the last section was going to be late twenty twenty-four. And how soon before we start pumping water after that? Well, I think as soon as we make that connection, I would assume that the city would want to start receiving some of that water. We work closely with your staff to make sure that, you know, as soon as they're ready to start receiving that water, we can make it available to them. And just for the residents' sake, how many gallons of water will we be pumping to the city of Kyle? That's a good question. In this phase, I'm sorry, I think in a little bit different unit, so give me a minute while I, I work through some math here. I believe we'll be on the order of about a thousand gallons per minute. My math. I just want the residents to see what, what they're to expect in the future. With that being said, even though we're gonna get this abundance of water, just being careful
careful how we grow the city is going to be important, making sure we, you know, protect that resource because it's an important resource. So yeah, definitely. Thank you, sir.
My pleasure.
Councilmember Floris Kell.
Thank you. I just want to say, looking at these interest rates, I'm really grateful. I don't know if it was the legal counsel that you guys have. These are great rates. And so to have these at the current economy status, I do want to say I appreciate it. And so, and I'm really excited to get our work started. So thank you very much.
Well, thank you. I wish we, you know, if we'd been able to close on this a month earlier, we'd have better news on the rates. But we will take the rates we've got now. And especially if you look at the entirety of the project, we've been very fortunate with the interest rates.
Any other questions, comments? Councilor Tobias.
Okay, so we're looking at a total of $14 million, correct? What we need?
That's correct, for 13.52 for Kyle's portion.
And where would we get, normally get this from, Jerry? As far as the funding through?
I'll lean on Purbet's in case I don't get this right, but it should come out of our water rates and our water funds.
Okay. All right. And the last question I have is, under the environmental clearance and its approvals, what type of clearance are these engineered corps looking for? That I noticed that's one of your challenges.
Yeah, particularly it's archaeological. So anytime we cross under what's called the Water of the U.S., and if we want to try an open cut across those, then they're looking for artifacts or something that would show that there were some previous historic use of that property by previous peoples. And so historically, we've been able to do some shovel tests and clear that relatively easily, assuming that nothing's found. There's just a certain reviewer that has now required more extensive work and more shafts and the work just continues to go on and on. And so in many cases, what's forced us to do is go trenchless. I mentioned Plum Creek, we would always go trenchless under because of the size of the creek anyway, but smaller tributaries that we would otherwise open cut, we are now going trenchless underneath so we don't have to do the additional testing of archaeological artifacts that we'd otherwise have to do.
Okay, so it's like digging for, finding those type of things. What about like any kind of hidden springs? Any kind of caves or just things like that is also what's part of this?
It's actually not part of that permit, but yes. As part of our overall investigation, we've got to clear to make sure that we're not impacting any, you know, endangered species, anything of that matter. If there's anything else that's protected that we need to be aware of, our environmental consultant walks the entirety of the easement to clear it environmentally, to look for all those types of things. And if we find those types of things, what we've tried to do during our alignment phase is just to avoid them because it's a lot easier to avoid them than it is to try and mitigate.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 17.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Floris Kell, seconded by Councilmember Parsley. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries six to zero. Thank you, Graham.
Thank you very much.
All right, next up, Agenda Item 18, Discussion of Possible Action for Marketplace Street Lights. Mayor Protam.
Yeah, just really quick, we had some backup pictures. Could we bring those up, Jerry? Okay, sounds good. So I got a phone call the other night from a resident saying that one of the lights were down. It was arcing. When I got there, city staff was already there. They were moving the light over. One thing I noticed is the lights on Marketplace are very close to the roadway. The reason they're being hit is because they're so close. I just wanted to make sure that when we come back with design for new roadways, that we're not putting those streetlights so close. Another thing I observed is those streetlights are painted black. You can't see them. They're really hard to see. So what I'd love to see us do as a city is put something reflective on them so that way they're identified. That area as well is where the light was hit. It changes from two lanes to one lane and usually cars get pushed over because they don't, the markings aren't clearly identified. I don't know the signage. We need more signage in that area, but something I'd like us to work on as a city, if council is amenable to it. But also really making sure that we don't make this design again. They're about 12 inches away from the roadway and maybe even less than that in some areas. And they're just a target. I mean, it's, look how close that is to the road. I mean, super close or a target. Usually when I see this kind of lighting, it's on the other side of the sidewalk to keep the sidewalk lit up. This design just didn't really work for us as a city. So making sure we don't replicate this in any parts of our city would probably be important. Making sure that we put some kind of reflective tape. I was thinking semi, something maybe white on each side just to try to protect them. The other thing is, if chief, is chief around or captain? I mean, anyone else? Griffith, could you come up and answer a couple of questions, please? Maybe you've got the insight on it. Something I want to make sure that we're doing as a city is making sure that we're dotting information down when we have these accidents, making sure we get insurance reports, who the driver was, you know, because this was an accident, right? So I'm just making sure that we are following up that way. And then as a city deciding who's liable for something like this, you know? So I don't know if we're doing that currently.
Yeah, anytime, any structure, anything owned by the city struck that we do a crash report, and that crash report will contain the driver information, their insurance information. And so we usually speak with Public Works and transfer that information.
Okay, and just making sure we get that over, that'd be great, just so we know who's accountable. On this light, it's kind of tough because, I mean, it's hard to see. It's not really identified. So if we could do something in the city to try to identify these lights, make them more visible would be great because it's just, it's just the wrong color and they're just close to the street.
Is there anyone from staff who can give us some feedback on that? In other words, why are they engineered so close? And is there anything that, is there any reason why we wouldn't want to have the streetlights further away from the road?
I can't answer that right now, but I'll look into it for you. Because I don't know.
Well, obviously, I mean, we have staff here. Is there just anyone who has thoughts on that?
Leon would be.
The item's posted, so I'd love to hear something from staff.
Leon, do you have any ideas?
So I think for me, moving forward, because this is already built out, moving forward, making sure that when we're approving designs, it's important to make sure we don't approve this kind of design.
Evening, Mayor and Councilman Leon Barba, City Engineer. Councilmember, this design was there when we started the projects back in 2013. So that's the design that was desired by council and engineering and staff. So I really don't have any information on it. But you make a good point. As I drove through there today, I noticed that too. So, and I would have thought initially that maybe we wanted those lights closer to the street for street traffic, but I did notice on some of the bridge structures, the lights are behind it. So it seemed to work there. Why can't it work on the rest of the area? So you've made a good point.
And I'm thinking about the visibility on the sidewalk as well when people are walking. That helps people be identified. This actually puts the sidewalk dark so you don't even see the people walking on there. So it just would probably be better to move, moving forward to redesign, you know, our future, you know, projects in a way where those sidewalks lit up, streets are lit up, and just making sure that everything's visible, keeping those pole away. I mean, that post is probably about, what, $7,000 to replace? And right now, trying to get a replacement post is probably next to impossible. So making sure we can do all we can to identify those posts so that way the drivers can see them. And any improvements we can do in that area, just to make sure that, I mean, that area catches everybody. For some reason, nobody knows that that turns into a one lane and they're always in the wrong lane and they're pushing cars over. So really, it was an accident waiting to happen. Anything we can do to try to rectify that and make it safer area is what I'd appreciate.
As far as the color, I think that was the direction we were given to make all our structures like that with the black color. For example, on Philomena, they're all black. We've been asked to look at traffic signals and making those black also, so maybe we need to rethink that.
And I'm good with the black color as long as we got reflective tape on them or something to, so they're identified. You know, when lights hit them, they'll be able to see them. And that's kind of where I'm at right now. So I'm okay with the black as long as we have some identifiers on them.
Are these the same poles that are off of 150? I think there's like a whole bunch with like.
I think those are a little different. Those are a little different.
Are they, are they black as well?
I think so.
Because I was noticing. All right, I'm just, I was just noticing, although they look really cute, they're not very bright. So I don't know if there's something that we can do to change a light bulb or I don't know how it's equipped, but I feel very fortunate to have those light fixtures out there. The downside is, is that the lights don't shine very bright.
So maybe switching them to an LED, a brighter LED, maybe.
And I think we maintain those lights. Am I correct on that, Scott?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we maintain those lights also.
What do we have in there, the gas bulb or do we have the LED? Sorry, Scott.
Got it for the record. They started changing them all to LEDs as they were getting, as the bulbs, excuse me, going out and they were going through, replaced them with LEDs. I'm not sure what's in there.
As long as we get a higher watt than what's going in right now, because if they're kind of low, getting a higher wattage would be great, making sure that, you know, the areas are visible. That's why we put them in, to make the areas visible. So making sure we have the right wattage and bulb in there would be great. Thank you, sir.
All right, anything else? You good?
I'm good as long as we get that taken care of.
All right.
Jerry, do you need direction or y'all got it? I appreciate your, thank you.
Well, I'd like to, I don't necessarily know if there's action that's being taken, you know, I'd like to know what the action is that's going to be taken. So there's a wide variety of potentialities that council could, or that staff could take from the conversation we're having. I mean, if we're going out.
We can meet as a group and we'll bring that back at the next council meeting, if that's what you're looking for.
Right, well, yeah, I mean, it would, I just want us to be more clear. So, because if I was you, I wouldn't know what I was supposed to do from this conversation exactly. I mean, we have a lot of streetlights out there with a lot of different lumens. And there's also going to be, there's going to be different folks come and talk to you about our dark skies ordinance and the specific rules around that and, you know, so. And then what kind of reflections or reflectors are we putting on there? I mean, are these big, huge things or small things? Or is it tape that's being wrapped around? And are you receiving that as direction for all of our streetlights throughout the city or just on Philomena and Marketplace? So I'm just, I just know you're going to get pushback from Harper in particular.
That's all, me, we'll explore all those options and we'll bring back our recommendation. And it will include reflective tape or something on street poles that include looking at relining the lanes on the roads and also what we can do about the lumens on the streetlights without affecting our dark sky policy. Look at all that.
Thank you, Jerry.
All right, next up is Agenda Items 19 through 22. I'm going to bring all these items up together. I was going to have staff give general overview of what these items are as well as the applicant for this project is here and have them come and speak on it. And then before we take up discussion, I was going to ask if we could go into executive session to seek advice of council. So that was my plan on these items. If anyone has any objections. All right. Okay. There's a comments, there is a public hearing on Agenda Item Number 19, so we get your chance on Agenda Item Number 19. All right, next up is Consideration, Agenda Item 19, Consideration and Approval of a Resolution Authorizing and Creating a Limestone Creek Public Improvement District. In accordance with Chapter 372 of the Texas Local Government Code Resolving Other Matters, Incident and Related There Too, and Providing an Effective Date. Agenda Item Number 20, Consideration and Approval of an Agreement Regarding the Dissolution of the Limestone Creek Public Improvement District. Agenda Item 21, Consideration and Approval of the First Amendment to the amended and restated Limestone Creek Development Agreement. And Agenda Item Number 22, Consideration and Approval of a Resolution Setting Public Hearing for the Creation of a Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone Number Four. These items are all sponsored by our Bond Counsel, Stephanie Libby. And Agenda Item Number 19 has a public hearing. But before we open the public hearing, I'd like to have staff give a briefing on these
So which staff member?
You can start, start with you. You're the sponsor. And then as it relates to, if you want to, as it relates to the drainage issue, we can have an engineer come up and speak.
Okay, perfect. So as Mayor said, Stephanie Libby Norton Rose Fulbright, our firm services bond counsel for the city of Kyle. First action item is the resolution that would actually create the Public Improvement District. Going back to April of this year, the city did receive a petition for the creation of a Public Improvement District from both Meritage Homes and LaSalle Municipal Utility District Number One. The action item before you today would create that district. It also has the estimated cost of the public improvements to be financed through that district. It's currently estimated that public improvements in the amount of $50 million would be put into place to service residents within the district. If this resolution is approved by council tonight, the resolution would be filed in county property records so that any future landowners within the pit would be informed as to its existence. As with every public improvement district, action tonight is the first action that would be taken related to that district. In order to proceed through the financing, we would come before council multiple times to approve a preliminary service and assessment plan, to authorize assessments, to authorize bonds. Each step of the way, city council approval would be required in order to proceed to the next step to bring us to an eventual bond financing. Happy to take any questions that you all have on the resolution or I can walk through each action item.
Yeah, if you can just go through the action items.
Okay. So let me just pull up the agenda so I keep my action items in order. Action item number 20 is Consideration and Approval of a Dissolution Agreement for the Public Improvement District. So should that Public Improvement District be created tonight, the developer in essence would provide a dissolution agreement between the developer and the city. So if the pit financing, if the first phase of pit financing did not occur, within the next three years, the pit itself would be automatically dissolved. And so this is done as a safeguard measure so that you don't have the creation of a pit and not an ultimate financing. So it puts a timeline on the financing for the development to move forward. Should that not move forward, then the pit itself would be dissolved and it would be as if, as if it was never in existence. Action item number 21, Consideration and Approval of First Amendment to the amended and restated Development Agreement for Limestone Creek. Under the amended and restated Development Agreement, it was agreed that the developer would finance or would include within the project some expanded construction for Go Fourth Road, which is part of the city's transportation plan. This First Amendment to the amended and restated Development Agreement would put some timing associated with when that road would be constructed. And so that would bring some certainty both to the city and city council to ensure that the project was able to come online and be an integral part of the city's, be an integral part of the city's mobility plan. Action item number 22, Consideration and Approval of a Resolution to Set a Public Hearing for the Creation of the Turs. So this too would be the first step for creation of a Turs. It currently provides for the calling of a public hearing on, I think the date is November the 15th, to create the Public Improvement District, or sorry, to create the Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone. We would appear before council on that evening with a preliminary finance project and financing plan, which would outline both the projects and estimated costs associated with Turs improvements, which would be done within this development. It's currently anticipated by this developer that the pit improvements and the Turs improvements would be the same improvements. Tax increment revenue generated from within the Turs would be used to offset pit assessments so that tax increments that the landowners are actually paying to the city are turned around and reinvested and used on an annual basis to buy down their pit assessments. So that is a general overview of each of the action items. Happy to answer any questions that you all have for any of them.
Okay, well, if there's no objections, I'm going to bring up Meritage, let them speak on the items, and then I'll have the public hearing and let Mr. Coleman come and speak.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Justin Bellmore of Meritage Homes, Vice President of Land Acquisition. Joining me today is Brandon Hammond, our Vice President of Development, and he'll be handling all the technical questions for, for me. and he'll be handling all the technical questions for me. Also with us is Robyn Sinclair of Meclos Sinclair, our Public Financing District Attorney, as well as our Patrick Born from Sundance Analytics, our pit financial advisor as well. You've seen this slide before, but I'd like to remind the city and staff that we are Energy Star Partner of the Year, Sustained Excellence, nine years in a row. We build energy efficient homes. That's our bread and butter. That's what we'll be doing here. And then we're also avid award winners for consumer service provided. This is our proposed land plan with a pit and a TERS. Obviously not depicted here is what the original land plan that was previously approved. Go Fourth Boulevard is a north-south collector road on the eastern portion of our project. And really, I think Stephanie did a great job summarizing the action items and stole a lot of my thunder. I would just point out that the Development Agreement, the amendment to the amended and restated Development Agreement will cause construction of Go Fourth Boulevard to commence no later than three years from the issuance of our first bond sale. If we approve the pit tonight, we, our schedule will be that our first bond issuance will be early spring of 2023. Therefore, the construction of Go Fourth Road would be commencing no later than early spring 2026.
And on the drainage issue?
So, the drainage issue.
Go for it.
It is, it is an interesting topic. Our discharge point is at the southeast corner of our property, and right now, the stormwater that is collected on this property is currently flowing to that southeast corner. We are planning on detaining and improving the detention of that area to reduce the flow off of our site below existing conditions, which is an improvement to what is required under Development Code and law.
Okay.
So would there be, would there be any drainage issues if you do that retention pond inside your property?
Will there be any drainage issues? Councilmember, you know, that's what the city engineer and what our team will be designing to solve, right? And, you know, we're designing to Atlas 14 standards, hundred-year flood events, and so we're reducing that flow below existing conditions. Once it leaves our property, that's another developer, and they will be accepting our conveyance, our discharge of stormwater and reconveying it elsewhere. But us, that's outside of our property boundaries and the scope of our development.
Okay, we're gonna have opportunities for questions. My, my plan was, because traditionally the way we do it is I was just gonna let, I was gonna let them say what they wanna say. I was gonna let Mr. Coleman come and say what they wanna say, and then let us go and first talk to our attorneys, and then we can come back out, and we'll understand the parameters, what we can ask and can't ask, or can and can't ask, and then we can go and ask all the questions that we want. But I wanted to give Mr. Coleman a chance to come up after they had a chance to speak on the drainage issues, knowing what he's gonna say.
I have questions too. I don't know if I really appreciate not being able to address those with them directly.
No, I'm not, I'm not, I'm sorry. Typically, the way we do all of our public hearing items is we come up, we have the item briefed, then we have a public hearing, then we bring back the applicant and ask questions. That's the way I've done it for a very long time. So what I'm trying to do is get deference to Mr. Coleman and allow for him to come and speak in a public hearing.
I understand that, but usually we just have the hearing first, and so...
No, that's not correct.
But it is. Go ahead.
If y'all don't ask questions, we'll have the public hearing afterwards. That's fine.
You know, I can't speak in absolutes. There's flooding that occurs, and I don't think we can, you know, if there's a massive flood event, I don't know what could cause. But we're gonna, what we're committing to is drainage, you know, designing and constructing to code and above in this instance.
Yeah, and I'll just add to Justin's point, thank you. The, the project has been designed right now, Phase One, it's under construction, I'm sorry, Phase One is under construction along with Waterstone Boulevard. Both of those plan sets have been reviewed by the city and permitted by the city. They meet all the code and criteria. At full buildout, we haven't designed Phases Three or Four, but as far as doing some conceptual design to understand how the drainage is gonna work along that eastern boundary of our subdivision, we have looked at that. And so upon full buildout and within the limits of our proposed project, it'll all be code compliant, meet design criteria. So we don't anticipate any sort of drainage problems, flooding problems within our development, because that's what we have control over. Furthermore, code requires post-development flows have to be B cor less than pre-developed flows. So our plan is to meet that. That's what we do. That's what we've done with Phase One, as far as how we're getting runoff over to the southeastern corner of our development. And we do plan to actually, as part of the benefits of the pit and TERS, is we're actually gonna retain or detain additional runoff, so that our runoff rates are actually about 10% lower than what's allowed by code. So in other words, if, let's just say, for example, it's 100 CFS or 100 cubic feet per second coming off the property in existing conditions, we're allowed to discharge up to 100 cubic feet per second in proposed conditions. We're, at this point in time, we're actually gonna be discharging at 90 cubic feet per second. Those numbers aren't the exact numbers, I'm just saying for context, we're actually gonna be discharging about 10% below what we're allowed per code.
So where is that discharge going?
The majority of it goes to the southeast corner of the development. And then there is like a basin on the north side, it's a smaller one. So, well, you can see that little green sort of polygon up there in the middle, at the top in the middle. That is another pond that'll be used to discharge, because we're following the natural drainage pattern. So there's another pond that'll be located up on the north side of the development.
Okay, so I guess, Mike, can I keep asking questions?
Let's wait till after executive session, please. Let's give Mr. Coleman a chance.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah, and I guess just to clarify, you know, we're reducing it to 90%, assuming the pit and the TERS were approved. If it isn't, then obviously we'd go back to what code was.
I'll wait till we can ask questions then.
All right. All right, this item has a public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward and speak? I'm gonna open up that public hearing now. Mr. Coleman.
My name's Edward Coleman. I'm the managing general partner for FM 158 Land. We own 600 acres that adjoins their property. And I have just some handouts that I'd like to pass out to you, and then I'll explain.
If you, if you just give me, I'll pass them down.
This is a, I have a written statement, but what is going on right now that I don't understand is, first of all, they're talking about Go Fourth Road being built. I'm talking about Item 21. They're talking about Go Fourth Road being built, and I've seen the plans for Go Fourth Road, and they have pipe in there, piping in there that will take it to a, almost to a channel that I built, an alliance built, someone had bought property from me, to transport, to trans, transport the water to our detention ponds. I'm just gonna read my public statement first. I've recently discovered that the City of Kyle made an agreement with the LaSalle Mud Number One Agreement Regarding Roadway and Drainage Improvements back in December 15th of 2020. And in that agreement, the city and the developer agreed to build berms that divert and channelize the stormwater onto the Coleman property, FM 158, FM 158's land. I am the managing member of this property. I did not agree to this water, and no one came talk to me when this agreement was being drafted. This is why the state of Texas has a water code, Chapter 11, Section 86. No person may divert or impound the natural flow of surface waters in the state or permit diversion of impounding. Here, that's, this, this is the, the water code that I gave you a copy of. I only found out about this in the last couple of months, because I noticed construction already is taking place on Limestone Creek Development. At that time, we asked for, a month or so later, when I was able to figure it out, we asked them to cease and desist until we all got together. I couldn't figure out why any, any agreements were made between anybody when I was the one that was accepting all the water. All the water was coming to my property, none to anybody else's. The water coming off of their property is what they're not telling you, is once it comes off of their property, in their right, it belongs to the next guy over. But that is LaSalle, and that is, and, and what they have done is they have an agreement with the city to build diversion dikes. That was done in 20, December 15th of 2020. And it's an illegal move. And, and Scott Sellers, Scott Sellers was the one they explained it to you, and I think our attorney gave each one of you the video of it. And he comes, he comes in and he says, we are going to, we are going to divert the water with these ditches, and it's the water off of their property. We're going to divert the water and, and flow it down, and channelize it, and flow it down to the Coleman property. That's, those are his words, close to them. You know, so, I am not, I'm not gonna let FM 158's lands, property rights be diminished so that the city, Meritage, Lennar, LaSalle, Waterstone, or Tac Development can benefit with building more homes on their developments from an illegal diversion of water. The millions of gallons of water being diverted to our property will eventually cause massive flooding and damage to FM 158's lands, property, possibly flooding FM 110 and Yarrington Road. My, when that water comes to my property, it is impounded. It doesn't go anywhere. If it goes to the east, like it has for 40 years, then that water goes to the farmers and the ranchers down to the east, and, and it is some use to them. On my property, it has to evaporate. We request the city council does not vote to approve this plan at this time, so that all in the plan can be contemplated with all parties involved, including FM 158, which is me. I have, I have never been involved in any of these discussions to this point, which, which does not include dumping, I'll, you know, contemplate it, but if it includes dumping millions of gallons of stormwater in F158's property, I just want everyone to understand, we are not the regional detention pond for, for this whole area. And that seems like, that seems to be the plan for everybody. This amendment, the First Amendment to amend the restated Limestone Creek Development Agreement, it's correct that the, there's one party in here that hauls this storm, is moving the construction of the land for, from 18 months, I believe, to three years. But today, we received the Exhibit F. If you look at Exhibit F, you can see where, again, they're channelizing the water to my property, but they not, not, they not only, I don't see where they're coming down. I only got this a little while ago, and I don't see where they're coming down Go Fourth Road anymore, but they're taking all their water to that southeast corner, and they are building a bigger detention pond there. But they're not only flowing their water onto me, now they're pumping it. They're putting in a pump station that's, I think, 10 foot deep, and then they're putting pumps in that, and they're pumping the water on me. So I don't, I, I, I just, I haven't had time to have my engineer, my engineers figure this out, but my engineers, there's a letter, there's a letter on the back of this coming from my engineer on the cubic feet per second. It's a lot more than what they have said in the past, at least Dusset. Dusset is their engineer. Now, I, I have, I have the people that did the original engineering, and, and their arrows and quantities are much different than the one that Dusset, Dusset has. So I, I'm just, I don't think it ought to be approved until I'm involved and my engineers are involved in discussions with their engineers, LaSalle's engineers, whoever else wants to be involved in it. But right now, it's all Dusset. And, and it seems like they're, they're the engineers for these guys, they're engineers for LaSalle. All the LaSalle projects are the engineer for Lennar, too. So I feel like Rocky Balboa in a fight here, but I'm gonna fight it.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to come forward and speak? All right, seeing done, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna close the public hearing. It's now closed. I'm gonna make a recommendation that we go into executive session, seek the advice of council, and come back out and continue to engage with the applicants. Is there any objection? All right, we're in executive session on these items. This meeting back to order. We still have the four items above us. Does anybody have any questions for the applicant related to the agreements? Councilmember Forescale?
Thank you. Thank you. I want to say, first of all, that there is nothing about your development that I do not like. Okay? I do have concerns. And not concerns for a company, and not concerns for an individual, but concerns for a landowner in my district. And so the questions that I'm gonna ask are gonna be pertaining to making sure that I protect the, the landowner in my district. So I don't want you to take it personal. I just wish that there was a little bit more cooperation and working together to just make things easier for council. It's a sticky, sticky situation, I'm gonna say that, and I, we're caught in the middle. But at the end of the day, I do like the product, and I do like what you guys have to bring. But just my concerns are my concerns. I see in the, the Limestone Creek subdivision drainage conveyance, exhibit F, see you have detention ponds, but no retention ponds. And the detention pond that you have is gonna be 10 foot deep with a pump. So where are you guys pumping that water?
So we're pumping that water to the LaSalle Mud property.
Brandon, that pump is just to move the water over a existing pipeline?
Correct, to existing gas transmission mains.
So we're pumping it out of one pond as that fills up and into the next pond, just over that easement, since we can't go underneath that existing pipe? So that's what the pump's doing. It's not pumping water and forcing it. It's as ponds fill up, it works its way through our detention system and discharges at a lower rate than what it's currently doing.
No, totally get that. But it doesn't, it doesn't discharge to a retention pond, right?
Correct. There, it's a detention pond. It holds the water, and then it slowly discharges it at a allowable rate. I don't know.
So my only fear is Texas tends to flash flood. And so if there is some kind of event where there's a significant amount of rain, and even the pumps can't pump in the direction you want it to, I, I get worried that it's going to affect another landowner's land.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, Brandon, but we're going with the most strict requirement, which is Atlas 14 and a hundred-year flood event?
That's what's required by city code. And there's a factor of safety that's built in, so we don't design just to the exact amount of detention that we need. We put what's called freeboard on top of that. So we've got a factor of safety built in up to the hundred-year storm, the storm that occurs once every hundred years.
So what I have in front of me is what I get all the time, which is just a snapshot. And it does bother me, it's not you, this is the city, and this is how we normally get stuff. So even though I'm just looking at this, and I know it's going to leave this land and maybe go to LaSalle, that's where it stops. I have no other confirmation that it's not going to go onto another landowner's property and cause issues.
Yeah, so to, to clarify a couple things. One is, with the first phase of development, we're putting in an interceptor channel. It's, it's in lieu of what's called the Spooner Berm, which is part of the LaSalle agreement with the city between LaSalle and the City of Kyle. This is gonna be an enhanced control to intercept flow along the north side of Quail Ridge subdivision. That's, that's to make sure that we're diverting that runoff around the northeastern edge of Quail Ridge subdivision to our discharge point at the southeast corner of our project. Furthermore, in the first phase of development, like what you see here on Phases Three and Four, this isn't, this is future. This is, this is conceptual design, because we're not that far along yet in our design.
So then let me ask you this. Say you do Phase One, and you... Say you do phase one and you do phase two, and then at phase three, you realize there's going to be a real issue with drainage. How would your company feel having to stop at just that? Because, and then I get you guys planned as you phase out, but knowing that there could be an issue here, my question would be, is it, is it worth a possible risk to do one and two phase, but at three, then we realize there's an issue?
Uh, and, and council member, I don't believe that that will occur. Um, I mean, your engineers will be reviewing our, our plan sets and ensuring that, um, we're meeting everything to code and, and designing to the standards that we just articulated, Atlas 14, hundred-year flood event. Um, to answer your question about where it goes after it leaves our property, that's in an agreement between the city of Kyle and, and the mud and, and we don't really have any control or say over that. Um, we can't install anything on the mud district property that changes the direction of it. We just know that our property discharges at the southeast corner. That's really all we're allowed, all we're allowed to discharge our stormwater off into that, that specific point. Um, it was, it's already identified in our proved prelim plan and, uh, the historic drainage patterns for our property. Um, after it leaves our property and enters into another property, that's, you know, between the mud and, and the downstream and landowners of that mud.
Okay. And for the, the sake of asking, um, I, I feel like I must ask, i- is it possible to have a meeting, um, with everybody to discuss this, um, whereas I would be present? And, and, and I would be thinking maybe by Friday?
Certainly, uh, council member, we can be available. Um, we have met with, uh, Mr. Coleman and the city, um, here. Um, and at that point, we didn't really know how we fit into the, the puzzle pieces. I think we have a better understanding now that, um, you know, this is how we're, this is where we're discharging into, we're lowering the rates, we can tell them that. Um, but outside of, you know, where the water gets diverted, once it's on to the LaSalle mud property, I, we, we really don't have a seat at that table for the discussion.
Okay. For me, it's just for everybody to be heard. Um, and, and for us to, for me to make a vote, um, based on reassurance. And so, if, if you guys were amenable to that, I would, I would like to, um, just have a get together and, and have everybody's concerns heard and then see if we can come. And I know, I feel like you guys have done this maybe a million times, um, but if you have faith, then maybe I can be of some assistance, um, to, to kind of move this along and get everybody on the same page. I would like that opportunity. Um, but I'm going to be honest, that would require me to not take a vote today. But, but I don't know if maybe a special called meeting could happen, just so we can discuss and vote on this after that meeting? I, I want to work with you guys as much as I want to work with my landowner, and I know you guys have people you have to answer to, but my goal is that we move forward all in agreeance and there's no animosity or frustration. Cause if you're going to build there, you, we gotta get along.
Any other questions?
No, I'm sorry, that's it.
Um, I'd like to make a motion to approve agenda items nineteen through twenty-two. Motion by the mayor, seconded by council member Tobias. Is there discussion on that motion? Mayor Proton.
Yeah, so this is just approving the, uh, this is just to codify what we've got in place with the, uh, agreement for the TERS, uh, that's going to be set up. Correct, Jerry? This is just to codify the agreement that we have for TERS. Okay, so we still haven't even gone into design. So, when, what I want to make sure is, we've moved forward with this, making sure we go to the design part of it, that we have conversations with Mr. Coleman, who's the adjacent property owner, with, uh, all the groups involved, with city staff. I want to make sure that Mr. Coleman, uh, has an opportunity to meet with our staff, Kishad and Kathy Rucker, when we're looking at the drainage issue. So, that way that we're transparent as a city, he's getting the information he needs to be able to know that we're not pumping more water on them. And, and rest assured that there is a state statute that says you cannot add more water onto somebody's property. It's illegal in the state of Texas. So, let's just keep that in mind and let's make sure as a city that we adhere to that and make sure that we're not adding more water flow to someone's property and we're not causing us some, a possible liability. But that's going to be up to our engineering staff, it's going to be up to everybody working together. And, uh, moving forward, let's make sure when we get to the design stage, we're not designing to flood somebody out. Cause I've, I've been a part of being flooded out. My property gets flooded out because of a bad design and it's the last thing I want to see happen. So, let's make sure that we all work together and we get this right, please.
Any other discussion? I agree with those statements. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries five to one. Thank you.
Thank you, council.
All right, next up, agenda item number twenty-three, First Amendment to the Regional Stormwater Facilities Cost Sharing Agreement by and among City of Kyle, Texas, North Hays County Municipal Utility District Number Two, Plum Creek Development Partners, LTD, and Mountain Plum LTD, uh, and Lennar of Texas Land and Construction LTD. Paige, you want me to open up the, the other?
Yes, please.
Mud items? All right, so that's twenty-three. Agenda item twenty-four, amended and restated First Amendment to the Consent Agreement by and among the City of Kyle, Texas, North Hays County Municipal Utility District Number Two, Plum Creek Development Partners LTD and Mountain Plum LTD. Agenda item number twenty-five, An Ordinance of the City of Kyle, Texas Ratifying, Confirming, and Approving, uh, the Granting of Consent to the Creation of the North Hays County Municipal Utility District Number Two and the Inclusion of Land Therein. Ms. Sands.
Mayor and Council, Paige Sands for the record. The three items that you read are related to, 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 uh, documents the city's previously approved. One is a consent agreement with the North Hays County Municipal Utility District Number Two. The city consented to the creation of that mud in 2017 and, um, had attached that document and ordinance that confirmed the, uh, consent of that, uh, mud. As the mud is progressing to issue bonds for construction of improvements within the, um, municipal utility district boundaries, uh, the attorney is reviewing the records and seeing some items that need a little bit of cleanup to be consistent with the legislation and to check the boxes the Attorney General is going to look at when it approves those bonds. One of those being that the Attorney General wishes to see a separate action on the ordinance creating the mud, uh, and not just an approval of the agreement. So, the attorney has requested the council formally approve an ordinance ratifying, confirming, and approving the creation of the mud, which you've essentially done in 2017 through approving the agreement. The second is to approve and amended and restated First Amendment to the Consent Agreement. Uh, the city previously approved, uh, First Amendment. This document just clarifies that, uh, while the mud has, uh, the requirement of having a twenty-cent property tax within the mud boundaries, uh, that the mud is not, uh, limited from issuing or levying a tax. That would be inconsistent with its, uh, enabling legislation and so the Attorney General would, they'd have trouble getting bond approval without that amendment to the agreement. With respect to the first item twenty-three, the First Amendment to the Stormwater Facilities Cost Sharing Agreement, if you recall, the city is a party to an agreement in which the North Hays County Municipal Utility District Number Two, Plum Creek Development Partners, and Mountain Plum, and Lennar, all have an agreement to cost share and participate in the construction of a regional detention facility to be used by those entities and that will eventually be conveyed to the city, uh, for the use for detention and recreational purposes. The agreements, the agreement is being amended, uh, to recognize some changes in the way that those parties are cost participating in the, uh, construction of that regional detention pond. The city is not paying any, any funds towards that. The city is not a party to any payments, but since the city's a party to the agreement, the city needs to approve the amendment. The one amendment affecting the city is that, uh, there's a requirement that there be a, uh, maintenance agreement that's prepared before the city accepts conveyance of that pond and that agreement will be between the city and the POA. Right now, it says that the agreement will be between the city and the parties. That, that's not accurate. The POA is going to maintain the, um, uh, aspects of the regional utility, uh, the regional detention facility. And so, that was just a discrepancy in the document itself. So, those are the purposes of these documents. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Uh, any questions for Ms. Sands?
And I think we also have the attorney maybe available for the mud, maybe available to answer questions as well.
Questions for the attorney?
I asked yesterday.
Motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve agenda items...
Twenty-three through twenty-five.
Twenty-three through twenty-five.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Floris Cale, seconded by Councilmember Tobias. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? Motion carries six to zero. All right, next up, agenda item twenty-six. This item was postponed at the last meeting. Uh, this item will be requested to be postponed again tonight. Approve a development agreement between the City of Kyle and Plum Creek Developers, LLC, Joe Brooks. Uh, there's some questions about drainage and stormwater, um, uh, related to this item as well. Uh, there's a, uh, a study that's being, uh, proposed to be brought back to the council, uh, or to staff, or staff to review, to get staff to support, uh, the letters of map revision. And so, to give them ample time, I would like to make a motion to postpone this item until, uh, November fifteenth, 2022.
Second, Mayor.
Motion by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Tobias. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? Motion carries six to zero. All right, next up is, uh, similar item postponed on the third, An Ordinance Amending Chapter Fifty-Three Zoning of the City of Kyle, Texas for the Purpose of Rezoning Approximately Eighteen Point Eight Four Acres of Land from Retail Services to PUD, uh, for property located approximately four hundred feet southwest of the intersection of Marketplace and City Lights Drive in Hays County, Texas. This is also Mr. Brooks and same, same item. This has an, item does have a public hearing. Uh, if there are no objections, I'll open the public hearing now. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward and speak? Uh, seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to postpone this item until November fifteenth.
Second.
Motion by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Floris Cale. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? Motion carries six to zero. All right. Next up, agenda item number, uh, twenty-eight, First Reading, An Ordinance Amending Chapter Fifty-Three of the City of Kyle, Texas for the Purpose of Rezoning Approximately Nine Point One Two Acres of Land to PUD MXD for property located at the northwest corner of North Burleson and Marketplace Avenue in Hays County, Texas. Uh, this item has a public hearing. Mr. Atkinson.
Will Atkinson, Planning Director, fold it for the record. Just to double check, can everybody hear me all right?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. Let me, uh, throw this stuff up on the screen real quick. Before you, we have a, uh, a pud zoning request for the MXD zoning district for just over nine acres of land, uh, at the roundabout at North Burleson and Marketplace. Um, the reason that, uh, we coordinated with the developer to, to enter into a pud is because, um, sometimes flexibility works out to the advantage of all parties involved when it comes to developments and what have you. So, in this case, uh, we wanted to do MXD because, um, there were some aspects of that zoning district that don't function as well. And we also wanted to make the project better than what the code already requires. It's currently zoned retail services. Uh, the comp plan recommends, uh, vertical mixed user of the MXD district in this area of the city as well. And right here up on the screen, I have, uh, the, the proposed pud zoning. They're gonna have some, some high points, they're gonna have approximately four thousand square feet of flex loft area, uh, for office use, uh, at the north end of the property. Uh, they're gonna be approximately thirty-one, um, units per buildable acre, approximately four thousand square feet of leasing office and amenity, approximately ninety-five hundred square feet of ground floor retail. They are prohibiting specific uses, um, in there that we generally don't want to see. We want to see more retail foot traffic generating uses on the ground floor commercial. Uh, it will be associated with the, uh, portions of the vibe trail system, even though they are not necessarily in a vibe node, they are very close and adjacent to it. And they are excited about, uh, being integrated into this as well. Uh, they're gonna put a hawk signal, uh, closer to the northern end of the project at a place where, which will be determined at the time of site development, um, to make sure where people cutting back across over to adjacent properties are going to be safe for pedestrians in the vibe trail system. Uh, they're, um, it was requested that they protect also the, um, there's four specimen trees on site that are in good, uh, health. Uh, per the, as they started going through their concept plans a little bit, they were able to, um, uh, preserve three of those and the specimen trees are our largest trees that we require protection on. And so, they will need to be required to remove the, one of them, just to, for adequate access from a fire code perspective. Um, but that'll be handled, um, for the Planning and Zoning Commission ultimately. They're also going to put wrought iron fencing adjacent to the Uni-Pacific Railroad. They're gonna have trees there for sound buffering as well. Um, and they're gonna have, uh, a handful of, uh, public spaces as well, including a park adjacent to the roundabout that'll be designed appropriately for, um, protection against the vehicles next to it, but also have an awesome amenity that's railroad-focused. Um, they're gonna have another amenity, excuse me, I'm trying not to sneeze, um, a little bit further north along the marketplace as well. And then they're also in the retention pond area, they're gonna have a little, um, I'm gonna, for lack of a better term, a dock, looking over kind of a fishing pier where you can also watch the trains go by as well. Some variances, and I'll try to keep this short. They did put in, do a traffic study, uh, to account for, uh, the increased, um, amount of traffic that's going to be part of the project, although it's going to be less, about half of what would be with the, uh, retail that's already allowed to be there. Um, they may further refine how the parking is going to, uh, going to come together and it's actually a pretty good plan from a, one space per bedroom. Uh, and then there's some other variances that are built into our current MXD code that just, it, it makes it really difficult for projects to come forward and for trying to create this, this synergy for pedestrian-oriented design in central core areas of the city, that these are ones that we are seeing quite frequently, so. And let me just throw up the, uh, some of the exhibits up on the screen. This is the exhibit where they're preserving the three out of the four trees. This is, uh, close to the roundabout. We've also included the parking study for reference material in the pud as well, so we have that, we'll have that as a document. And then, here's a concept plan showing the, the number of units and the breakdown. And then, I also included some of their material that they, they sent us, so we could have a nice, uh, angled view of the property, so you can get a much better feel of how it's going to interact with Marketplace Avenue and Burleson Street. With some examples of development patterns that you're going to see. And last but not least, uh, we threw in a blown-up picture of where the, everything in blue is the portion of the vibe trail that they're gonna build. And also blown up picture of the, uh, the public space near the roundabout. And this will have, um, this is a concept plan, it will be further refined, assuming the, um, the zoning goes through with, uh, with, certainly to make sure that there's safety measures in place for the adjacent vehicles. They are gonna have trees there, um, we will work with them to make sure that there is appropriate fencing and what have you there too. Uh, but we believe it's going to be a very fantastic project. And, um, I do believe, um, the, uh, the applicants are here at the meeting and they, I believe they also have a, uh, a, um, presentation they want to, um, present to y'all as well.
Uh, this item has a public hearing. Is there any objection to open the public hearing? All right, the public hearing's now open. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward and speak on this item? If you're the applicant, well, hang tight. All right, hang on a second. So, all right, seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Public hearing is now closed. Go ahead, Amanda Swor.
Hi, I'm Amanda Swor with Drainer Group. Uh, thank you for having us here this evening. I don't think it's been said, but y'all look awesome.
Thank you.
I walked in, I was like, oh my gosh.
We're locking the business end of it now.
I forgot I was even wearing a costume. Uh, I walked in, I was like, man. And then everyone kept coming in, so y'all look amazing, you did a great job and you coordinate really well, so.
You're a little bit like, does he dress that way?
I was like, damn, I was like, I'm underdressed today.
We all shop at Party City.
Uh, I do have a presentation, given the hour, um, I think Will covered a lot of it. I do just have an image I'd love to throw on the screen that I just got today, um, that kind of shows a little bit of the storyboarding that the project has done. So, if there's any way that the image I emailed over, um, just a little while ago could go up, um, I just would also love to compliment your staff. We started working with them very early in this process, um, and we came in with what was primarily a multifamily project. And they advocated really hard for what the vision was, um, that they had heard from y'all and they really pushed us and we are very excited and proud of the project that is in front of you today. Um, I do have, um, the developers here with us this evening, if you have any questions, as well as the, um, the art landscape architect and the engineers. So, if you've got questions, uh, we've got answers. But I really just wanted to, um, throw this up there, Will did a great job of kind of talking through the fine points of the pud, but I really just wanted to talk a little bit about some of the details that have come into play as we've gone through the public hearing process and some of the feedback that we've, we've received. So, let's see how descriptive I can be, um, with... So let's see how descriptive I can be without a pointer. So if we start on this, the craziest thing about this project is north is on the right side of the page. So for every, so I'm gonna talk kind of planned north, north, south, east and west just for ease. So when you look at the top of the page, the, the pink is really where the UP rail line is and the south of the page is marketplace, right? We really started this project realizing that there's not a back of house, right? You have everything along marketplace that you really wanna be forward facing to everything along Burleson, but then you have residents behind you in the vibe trail to the north slash right of the page. And so the project was really designed with that in mind. And so when, kind of some of the differences between what the zoning is today and what we're excited about with the MXD, when you look at the rail line to the front, we really looked at, and that was a big topic of discussion at Planning Commission, is how are we buffering that? What are we doing with just the existing zoning? You would tend to have a six-foot privacy fence. That would actually with the train reverberate noise back to the neighborhood. And so we were really cognizant about what that fencing looks like and did receive some direction for wrought iron fencing, which has been included. And then that landscaping area has been doubled. So the buffering will be done from a vegetative perspective versus just a, a sound barrier perspective. If you go to the right of this, sort of the north of the property, that's again where the vibe trail comes in. And so we really are very excited to incorporate that into the project. The loft flex units are on that north side of the project, so really interacting with, with the trail. And that continues along the east side or the bottom of the page. In that yellow area is where we anticipate that hawk beacon going that staff mentioned, that pedestrian crossing. Anyone doesn't know what that is, like if you're walking down the street, it's where you push the button and then you wait for a minute and it gives you the hand and it flashes. So it's truly a safe pedestrian crossing, not just a, not just markings on the ground, it's actually, it's a traffic directing crossing for pedestrians. Pardon me. And then I wanna focus also just a little bit on the green area, which is at the roundabout. That is where the, the park amenity that we're really excited and appreciated that direction. This will be a train themed park as the majority of this project, as we anticipate there being a, like a true live boxcar there that has doors that open and function as part of the project. I don't know about you, I have two kids. I have one kid that only wants to like climb on the playground and swing on any swing that you can find. And I have one kid that only wants to find a ball and anybody that will throw something. And so this project will include both of those. So it'll include both open area, free play space for kids and program space for those that desire it. We also worked really hard with staff to make sure that all of the buildings had a retail component in it. So again, almost ten thousand square feet of retail space within the project that's in, there's also the flex space. So both of those are included and there's retail in all three of the buildings so that as a pedestrian walks along that marketplace, they are, there's interactive space along the entirety of the project. That's my, that's my sales pitch. If I miss anything, the team can kick me, but I'm happy to answer any questions and appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening.
Thank you, Amanda. Does anybody have any questions for the applicant? Councilmember Parsley.
All right, thank you. So you already answered the area for commercial. Have you locked into any specific businesses that you wanna put in there?
So we've really, we're really trying to keep a lot of that open. The one piece that we know for sure is that around the restaurant, that area will be, around the park, that area will be designed as a restaurant use. So it will be designed out with grease traps and all of the components that allow an actual food service business to go in there. The other, and Josh, I don't know if you wanna chime in differently, but the other retail components will be built out with the ability to adapt to any use that would like to come in and utilize them.
Okay, and so all of the retail is going to be in that section on the green area, the front porch gateway area?
There's, there's actually retail in all three, in all three buildings. So let's see if I can use my descriptive words really well, since I can't point. So if you look at the north piece of the green, so on the right of that, that's where the restaurant is envisioned to be. When you go to the longer backwards L building, there's retail on both ends of that. So kind of across the entrance from the restaurant and then at the other end by the entrance to the further north end, and then also across from that. So for retail to survive, it needs parking. And so that's why the retail was very specifically and deliberately placed within the project. So rather than just putting a long line where you would have parking between the building and the street, that didn't make any sense. So we placed it purposefully where someone could come in, see it, park, utilize it, and then continue in whichever direction they wanted to go. So it's in all three buildings.
Okay, cuz it's setting here, public-private area, so I didn't know if public was gonna have access to all three buildings, retail area.
Yes, ma'am. All three buildings will have a retail area that is open to the public.
Those were my questions. The elevation, I was not a huge fan of it.
Understood.
That will be it for me.
Other questions? Councilmember Tobias.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for including the train theme program. As you know, across the street, we have a depot that was just made a historical marker. So it's glad that you considered making the playscape something central that, that's of Kyle on that end. And I had one more, okay, we had, we discussed the trees by the trip, by the playground and so forth. So my question would be for you, Will. Planning and zoning voted three to one on the recommendation. Do you know what that one was concerned about? It looks like it's a good concept, but I know that maybe one may have some, some feedback. That's usually what I look at, or maybe not, if it's a fit for that area.
I can answer if Will wants me to. Or I can provide some insight. So the general questions were related to transportation, the, the traffic that was there, and then really that buffer in between. And so that's where that enhanced buffering came from. We worked with staff after Planning Commission. There was concern on how the interaction between the neighborhood to the, across the railroad tracks, which would be to the west, would interact with the site and how noise would, would play. And so that's when there was kind of some talk about different types of fencing, but we, we said on the record that the fencing would just reverberate. And so after that, that's when we doubled the landscaping buffer in there to provide the, the general or the native buffer. And then the second question, we addressed in the Planning Commission hearing, but it was kind of the difference between trips per day, between a use that complied with the existing zoning and this proposed use. And the numbers are in the, in the backup that we sent to this, to staff, but it reduces, our numbers reduced by about half the vehicle trips per day. We used very conservative numbers. If you used a thousand square foot retail center, or a thousand, a hundred thousand square foot retail center, which per zoning you could probably get about six times of that, but that's a conservative number on what would fit there. It had, it would generate about four thousand nine hundred and fifty-four trips per day. And our, our project as proposed would generate half of that.
Okay. Well, I like the idea of the hawk light. I've never, I've kind of seen one, but when Councilmember Parsley and I, when we were at TML, we were at the exhibit there and they were showing some of the new state-of-the-art crossing signals that are just like totally awesome. Like you press the button and the whole thing lights up. Remember the whole sign? And it like really gave a track of like, you know, yellow and then red and flashing to where it really gave people a sense. Cuz Marketplace Avenue is a very busy place. I think it's at a forty-five mile an hour speed limit, if I'm not mistaken. So something like that would, would be very helpful. That's all I have. Thank you.
Councilmember Brett Cho. Okay. Any other questions? Councilmember Floris Cale.
Thank you. All right. So I met with the developer with Kathy Rucker, cuz I was concerned about flood issues. And to my relief, there are none. There, there's a part on the upper right hand that's gonna be vibe and there's, there is flooding in that area, right?
There, there, so there is a creek to the north of the site, but our project is not within any of the flood plain.
Okay. So one of my concerns was the front entrance. And I was, I was, it's awfully close to the roundabout and I had asked for them to kind of move that back. And he, he seemed amenable to that.
Yes, ma'am, that's accurate. We are willing to, so the concern that we had heard is that the southern driveway, the access point and its duration to the roundabout, and we are, I'll say that on the record for sure, we are committed to working with staff to move it as far north as we can.
Okay, I appreciate that. And then I see that you're getting a variance for the traffic study, is that correct? Did I read that, William? Will? Sorry.
So they went ahead and, and did one anyway. That's what, that's built into the pud.
Okay. Well, thank you.
I thought I heard him say they did one.
I wasn't here.
I saw that too.
Could you send that to us?
Uh, we sent it to the city, yes.
Okay. And then lastly, I love. I'm sorry, what?
I was gonna say, it's, it's part of the pud document in the exhibit of the ordinance, this traffic study.
Thank you, thank you. Obviously didn't look that far cuz I met with him and I really, really like, I like this development. I love the train theme. That was, that's gonna, you don't know how happy that's gonna make a lot of the, the people that live downtown. But one of the ideas that I brought to him, which I don't know if he's willing to do, we just briefly discussed, is sticking maybe cargoes along the rail to give it a, a different look and to buffer it even more, and then maybe putting some kind of activities over there so families can come and gather. I would like to utilize that, that place as, as much as we can. So it was just an idea that I, that I put out there.
One second.
Right here. So there's like cargoes that open and close. And so you would have like the wire and then you would have cargoes. Anyways, I don't know if they wanna do it, but.
He, he was kinda saying the same thing that I was thinking in my head. So your first question was kind of what was the, what was the conversation at Planning Commission? And it was kind of what are we doing with that space in between? And some of the desire and direction that Planning Commission had mentioned was, hey, maybe don't put activities in there because it is super close to the neighbors on the other side. We are very open to kind of working through, on the, what's in the pink up here? Is that where you're talking about?
Yes, yes, it's exactly where, but if we have the buffers, you have the trees and then you have maybe some cargo things.
We are all for it and open to it. We just got some initial feedback to maybe not put active uses in there. So we would be more than happy to work with staff. I think it's something that would be really beneficial. We did hear some trepidation from one of the commissioners about putting active uses in there, which is why at this point in time, it's just anticipated to be landscaping. But we are more than happy to.
Okay, just don't put any speakers, like, I don't think, but a gathering place, I think, that would be, that would be kinda nice. Yeah, if you wanna like even bring that back and let us look at that. I love this project and with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda.
Hang on. I'm gonna bring up Agenda Item Twenty-nine as well. It's the developer agreement. Is that okay? All right, Agenda Item Number Twenty-nine is approve a development agreement.
I still have discussion on this first one.
Okay, you do? Sorry, I didn't, I didn't see your hand. Go ahead. Mayor Proton.
First of all, I just wanna say it is a great project. If it wasn't so close to the parking lot back there where Councilmember Cale was talking about, I think maybe some railroad cutoffs where people could come and spray paint. I mean, art on the railroad is always great. My daughter always mentions when we're waiting for the train here in Kyle, look at the beautiful artwork on the trains. I wish there was a place we could go out and do that. That'd probably be something neat, amenable, something really neat for Kyle. Unfortunately, it's near the parking lot and worried about the overspray from the spray cans. Yeah, definitely, but I thought that would be kinda cool when we're trying to sell art throughout the city, try to, not sell art, but you know, bring art to our residents is kinda crazy. It would be a great idea. But one of the things I want to make sure that we address is over at the play area, making sure that we do have a buffer between the run, roundabout and the play area, making sure we have some trees of a capable size that'll probably withstand. I know we're gonna have the fence, but every little bit of, anything we can do in that area to keep cars from going over there, the roundabout kinda scares me, make sure that we have that buffer there that's gonna keep kids safe, the families safe as well. Second thing is making sure that everything facing the railroad is soundproof, making sure we, we don't shortchange ourselves on the project, making sure that the people that live there have everything that's capable to keep sound out. That's the windows, that's the art ratings, you know, if there's something that we can do as far as a soundboard or even the type of material we use to wrap the building, making sure that we make it soundproof, just making sure that the residents that live on that side facing a track aren't inconvenienced by all the noise. That's what I do. And then my last question is making sure that we build a foundation that can sustain the vibration of the train as well. So making sure that your engineers do their due diligence on that.
Yes, sir. All, all three of those are absolutely items that are utmost concern to our project as well. The safety of the kids in that area is of paramount importance, both from a, we plan on using kind of everything, right? Trees, grading, anything that you can to kind of provide that safety buffer between the road and the play area. And then the intent is to use the newest technology possible to definitely soundproof the, the, I keep calling it the north side, the west side of the project. You know, that is, if, if it doesn't work for our residents, it doesn't work for the city. The last thing anybody wants is someone to move in and wanna move out three weeks later or three months later when they're in there and they, and they can't hear things. So we are definitely intending to meet all of the items that you discussed.
Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna bring up Agenda Item Number Twenty-nine as well. Approve a development agreement between the City of Kyle and Irreniman Development Company, LLC. Councilmember Floris Cale.
Yes, I would like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number Twenty-eight and Twenty-nine.
Motion by Councilmember Floris Cale, seconded by Mayor Proton Rizzo. Is there a discussion on the motion? Councilmember Parsley.
Would you guys be able to provide different elevations for this property?
Yes, ma'am, we've taken in the feedback and we're working with our architects to come up with some updated designs based on the feedback.
Because we, we are trying to hold another developer to higher standards on the sign, right, by you guys. So I don't want this to look much different than what they're doing, so.
You think before second reading, potentially, y'all could meet with Councilmember Parsley to discuss more in detail what those elevations are?
We'd welcome that opportunity. If you just let us know a time that works, we'll make that happen and we.
And I know you guys have, who's Shannon?
Shannon.
I know. I apologize for my lack of response, but yeah, so I can provide some ideas. I just wanna make sure, cuz this is gonna, to me, this, the whole area is very important. This is kind of bringing downtown into the, the actual city and I would like the transition to be smooth and the designs to kind of match, so.
Absolutely. We have our architects on standby knowing that we'd probably get some feedback. And so we look forward to hearing your thoughts and then getting something back to you before second reading.
Okay. If there's any relief to, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I do know Shannon was a planning director, is that correct? In two different cities. So when I learned that, it, it brought me a little bit of relief to know that, you know what I mean? And so I appreciated that information and so I thought it was important that we share that.
Thank you.
So one of the things I, I forgot to mention earlier, when I was looking at the project is roof lines. The middle building just seems like a really flat roof. Making sure we get some aesthetics, get some different roof elevations would be key for me. I just don't wanna go out there and see a flat roof. It's just, it's kinda tough to see, so yeah.
Message received, definitely.
And Daniella I trust.
Thank you, Daniella.
All right.
With that, Ms. Parsley, would you mind if I attended with you, if possible? You out of mind?
No, we welcome the opportunity.
Just kinda give input or just kinda hear what she has?
We love the feedback.
Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? Alls in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you.
See y'all in two weeks.
Y'all look great.
Thank you. All right, next up is Agenda Item Number 30. Uh, first reading and ordinance amending Chapter 53 zoning of the City of Kyle, Texas for the purpose of rezoning approximately 7.17 acres of land from agriculture to community commercial property located on Lot 2, Block A of the Findlay subdivision in Hayes County, Texas, uh, 3600 Stagecoach. Uh, this item has a public hearing. Mr. Atkinson.
Right, uh, Will Atkinson for the record, planning director. I just stopped sharing, so give me a second. All right, so, um, this petition number Z dash 22 dash 0106 is to rezone approximately 7.16 acres from agriculture to community commercial zoning. Uh, as you can see in the map right there, um, as I blow it up, it's the area in the yellow outline. Uh, to the northeast, to the intersection, there's an exist, there's a gas station and car wash being built and zone retail services. Uh, to the north, there's a vacant lot for retail services. And then to the northwest and west are lots and properties zoned for residential uses. And then to the southeast is, um, lots zoned for retail services as well. To, to keep it relatively short, as I know this is a bit of a long meeting, um, when the applicant came to us and asked to rezone the property to a commercial project, uh, related to retail, uh, they initially, uh, if memory serves, they wanted to do retail services just like the adjacent lot right at the hard intersection. However, staff believed it was not appropriate to do full-on, uh, retail services, which is highway commercial point-of-sale service where you can have a car wash, you can have a lot of items that would be appropriate along, along a state highway, but not necessarily appropriate even half-block off or if you're off a secondary road adjacent to residential. So, uh, we had proposed a community commercial zoning district, which takes into account a very, very stringent, uh, landscape buffering and fence buffering against residential areas, uh, 10 to 15 feet approximately with a lot of trees and shrubs. Um, they cannot, they cannot have any drive-through related, uh, businesses within 75 feet of anything residential. Um, and so they, um, they, and they're limited to heights as well within so many, within, within so many feet of residential as well. And so the, all the requirements that are built into the community commercial zoning district are, you could, you could call them, they, they have a really heavy emphasis on form-based zoning, which means it has to be a very well-thought-out, well-designed project from a site development firm that's already built into the code by default. Uh, you're talking about curvilinear ponds. Um, this site is also gonna have a, a chance to tie into a, a vibe trail spur adjacent to the Old Stagecoach Road with a bond project hopefully, but also into the Sage Hollow neighborhood to the north. Um, there is a massive amount of opportunity here for this to develop into a, a project that is both something that's successful, that'll be, uh, well-received by the community from a, from a patronage standpoint, and also to protect the adjacent, uh, residential, both future homeowners to the north and existing ones to the southwest. Uh, and staff has every confidence that this is appropriate and we asked that y'all vote to approve it as well. Any questions for me?
Thank you, this item has a public hearing. If there are no objections, I'm gonna open the public hearing. Uh, public hearing is now open. Is there anyone remaining who wishes to come forward and speak? Uh, seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing, it is now closed. Anyone have any questions for staff? Councilmember Bradshaw.
Mayor, before we even have a question, I'd like to make a motion to postpone this item to our next meeting.
Okay, there's a motion by Mayor Proton, seconded by, uh, Councilmember Floris Kell that we postpone this item to the next meeting.
And leave the public hearing open.
Uh, all right, I already postponed it, I forgot about that that was going, I was just moving forward. So there's multiple things that are happening, because I had, I had acknowledged Councilmember Bradshaw and then you jumped in. So I want to give her her chance to ask her a question, uh, and then we'll just move forward. Councilmember Bradshaw.
Will, what was the nay vote? From PNC?
I believe it was, uh, our, yes, ma'am, I think it was our newest commissioner, Sarah Onkin. She had concerns relating to, um, the, the drive-through uses that are allowed. They are limited uses, um, in the, in the zoning district. And their concerns related, and so we, we worked what we could to address those within the code related to how far away they have to be from the residential side of things.
Uh, Mayor Proton, you wanna state the reason for that?
Yeah, the reason I wanna postpone this item is because I think we need to do more work as a city. Um, the reason why is, uh, if you look at page two of three in the last of the backup items, uh, you'll see the history. So Old Stagecoach Road is not just a name, it's the original route of the stage line. Uh, the route and the historic areas along this way should be preserved. There's nothing in here that actually codifies what we're preserving. So one of the things I want to see codified before we even move forward is making sure we preserve that roadway. That roadway doesn't need to be re-diverted, we can build another roadway. I just wanna make sure that that roadway stays in existence because it is part of our history, is the Stagecoach line. The second thing is that we have a historic well there that was dug in the late 1800s that, uh, is called the Stagecoach, um, Well, where a stage coach is, used to come and water and we used to have some of the soldiers that came through the area, water their horses as well. There's a lot of history in that area. Making sure that we find a way to preserve those two is gonna be important, I think, for us as, as a city because it's our history and making sure that we have something codified that preserves that, not just something that says that we need to take care of it. I wanna make sure that we have something that actually codifies that in the language of the development coming forward. The other thing, there's a couple of really old, oak trees on this property, making sure that we preserve those. They're, they're, they're very old and historic, so making sure that we, uh, uh, find a way to protect those, uh, very large oak trees on that property. I've walked the property and, uh, there's a couple of trees we need to really make sure that we preserve.
Councilmember Floris Kell.
You can go ahead.
No, go ahead, there's a motion on the floor, sorry.
Um, I do just have a question, does this rezone have a development agreement or will it have a development agreement?
It's just a zoning for community, community commercial. So, but it's, as it relates to historic trees, we have a landscape ordinance. So if they are gonna attempt to remove, they have to get a variance just like the item we took up. There's one big tree that is gonna have to be removed for their site plan, but as Will said, it has to go back to planning and zoning for that to happen. I'm not sure...
I was thinking more about the traffic that the planning and zoning, um, commissioner had an issue with. So I didn't know if we could somehow, um, negate that by a development agreement, but if, if we don't, then we don't. But that was my only concern.
If, if I may, to be able to...
Can we just, yeah, just, uh, community commercial is a zoning designed to feed the traffic from the community there. So it's not designed to make a big impact in terms of increase of traffic the way retail would. I mean, that's what neighborhood and community commercial are designed for, so I'm not really sure what the traffic argument is. But, uh, I, I, I'm trying to understand the well situation. Is that, is there an actual his, historic well that, and your goal would be to see that it was not co, covered up or abandoned?
Yeah, making, making sure that we don't, uh, cover it up, make, making sure we don't bulldoze it down, making sure we find a way to preserve it. Uh, before, um, our city manager, uh, left, him and I were working on preserving this. We had reached out to the landowner, he, he seemed amenable to working the well into his project. I just wanna make sure that we codify it in some kind of language. I don't, I don't, look, I'm, I'm not saying that he would go back on his word. I'm just saying that if we don't have it in writing, it's like not having it at all.
Right.
Just making sure that we do everything we can to preserve the historic stage line, the original stage line there. Making sure we, um, preserve this historic well. And as a city of we, I, I really think we need to do our due diligence and make sure that we, um, hire a team. I, I got an email on a team that would probably be able to do the study to find those historical significance. I'll email, forward that email to staff and make sure that we're doing everything we can to preserve the history of Kyle. This is an important part of our history and the reason why is before there was a rail line, before there was a Kyle, there was a Stagecoach line. And it's what the families used back in the day. And making sure that we preserve that and, and pay some homage to what Kyle was before it was Kyle and, uh, not forgetting our history is what my goal is here.
Okay. Um, so, I mean, this is, but your issue is not with community commercial zoning there?
No, it's, it's not with the community commercial zoning, I actually like that because it's a better zoning for than, uh, just regular commercial. Uh, the drive-through, uh, I, making sure that we do it in a way that it doesn't interfere with the residents, uh, that live nearby. Uh, I wanna make sure we have the buffer zones between the properties as well. Uh, it's something that I'll, I'll push as well, but also preserving the, uh, large oak trees that are on the property and, uh, the well.
And then you said the Stagecoach line, you're talking about the Stagecoach Road, wanting to preserve it so that it doesn't go away?
Yeah, making sure, making sure that we don't, as a city, give it to a landowner or something like that as a private right-of-way. Making sure that it's always, uh, it always belongs to the, the community, because it's the original rail line, uh, Stagecoach line. I'm making sure, you know, because it's a part of history. If it was just a roadway, I probably would be okay with just giving it away later if we're doing some kind of a land swap or something. But because it's a, a, a part of the original Stagecoach line that ran through, ran through Kyle, I, I have a little bit of an issue of, you know, making sure that we preserve it. I'm not saying that we're doing something with it, but I'm just making sure that we have language in place now to preserve it. So, uh, it, this is the time to do all this.
Well, but is this the Greg family who owns this?
No, the Greg family doesn't own Stagecoach Road, we do as a city.
No, the land that we're zoning, or is this their land transaction? Because all the negotiations we've done as it relates to Stagecoach and the majority of the land...
This, this is a different landowner.
Okay, so, but the, the, the negotiations for the route of Stagecoach as it relates to the, all those homes that are existing right there next to Stagecoach, that's the Greg family.
Yeah.
And so they're the ones who are impacting and wanting that road to be moved further away from their properties and for it to be rerouted, which I have no idea where we're at. I don't think we're anywhere in those discussions, but that, the route of Stagecoach as it relates to future development is not something we're gonna be able to deal with now in the zoning.
But I didn't know if it was tied into this project. That's why I'm asking if there's anything going on with this project, but right now it looks like the roadway stays in. I'm just making sure that staff know, is aware right now the historical significance of that, uh, roadway. But really, right now, this project is about the well. Making sure we get that, uh, codified in some kind of language that we, uh, are preserving that well.
Okay, because I think that's an attainable goal. I don't know that the route of, you know, not moving Stagecoach over a little bit to take the bend out and to move it away from the homeowners, it's still gonna be Stagecoach.
Yeah.
But I do understand your point, it's just, that's the Greg family who would be the ones who would negotiate that. And, you know, there's a long way to go on that deal. That's months away from, you know, maybe even years away, so. But is there anything that we can do, uh, related to the well? Uh, are you in contact with the sellers? Will, or the applicant? To ask if they intend to preserve the well and if they would, would they codify that?
Yeah, Mr., uh, one of the adjacent landowners, uh, Mr. Frankie, just to the southwest there, he is, he has indicated there was a well on site. Um, I'm not aware of where it is, but, uh, we can, I, I do know as part of, uh, a project's, um, requirements, they have to check with the, um, with the state to make sure there, if there's wells on site that they're accounted for appropriately. And as part of that process, as we're coordinating with them, we can, uh, we can coordinate with them and see if they're, they can make that into an amenity source from a historical perspective.
Yeah, so I, I've got pictures of the well, I've, uh, I've got the location as well. So I've gone over and explored it with the permission of the property owner, um, that was there previously. So, uh, I do have all that, I'll send it to you, Will. But as soon as you come into the, uh, what do you call it, utility district to Area 57 off of Stagecoach, as soon as you, you go in about 100 feet, it's there on your right, there's a, a grove of oak trees right there and you'll see the well in there.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
Uh, is there a discussion on that motion? All right, all those, uh, actually, um, if there are no objections, I'm gonna reopen the public hearing. Public hearing is now open. Uh, and the motion on the table is to postpone, uh, until the next regularly scheduled meeting?
Correct.
Do you wanna clarify that?
Yep.
All right.
Uh, Mayor, I'd like to postpone, uh, Agenda Item, sorry, I lost 30.
30.
And, uh, keep, uh, to the next regular, uh, meeting, city council meeting, and keep the, uh, public hearing open as well.
Yeah. All right, so, uh, the, is there discussion on the motion? All those favors say aye? Aye? All opposed? Motion carries six to zero. All right, next up is Agenda Item Number 31. I watched this one at PNC, this one was interesting. First reading and ordinance, uh, amending Chapter 53 of the City of Kyle, Texas for the purpose of rezoning approximately 153 acres of land from agriculture to R1A, approximately 16.5 acres of land from agriculture to R32, approximately 1.5 acres of land from agriculture to retail services for property located between Opal and, uh, Roland Lane adjacent to UPRR tracks, which includes all legally recorded lots in the final plats of Paramount Section 1, Paramount Section 2, and Opal Point at Kyle MF in Hayes County, Texas. This includes all the property contemplated in the development agreement between the City of Kyle, Texas and Intermandico, uh, GP LLC or assigned dated August 10th, 2017. This item has a public hearing, it's been a long time since I've heard the word Intermandico. Mr. Atkinson.
All right, uh, Will Atkinson for the record, planning director. All right, so in short, this project is a dobbing of the i's, crossing of the t's procedural zoning request. In the development agreement that was stated in the, uh, in the public notice and also on the agenda item in Section 2.02, it contemplates what zoning will be on site. What it does not contemplate was the applicant having to apply for the zoning by a certain date. That was a, a development agreement entered back in 2017. And so now, as we're processing through the permits and for this project, they are allowed to do all their subdivision improvements and all that. But now that they're halfway through their project, um, it makes it very difficult from a, getting all the hundreds of landowner per, permissions to rezone each individual lot. And staff has been receiving phone calls from lenders and what have you asking why this project has ag zoning, but they're allowed to have this very specific land uses on site and then it don't match up. So the city has decided, and I say the city, the planning department has decided to utilize the city's granted powers by the state for unilateral zoning to move forward to rezone the properties in accordance with the development agreement that's already in place. So, um, from a documentation standpoint, from paperwork and everything, it's a lot more efficient for once for the government to do this instead of the applicant. And so that's why we're here. Um, it, it passed six zero, or sorry, seven zero, no, six zero with the Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, last week. It's procedural thing, we'll just clean everything up, put a nice neat bow on it. And, um, if you have any questions, feel free to ask.
All right, this item has a public hearing. I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward and speak? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing. It is now closed. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Atkinson? Councilmember Floris Kell.
Thank you, is, so this is, are these houses already built? I guess I'm kinda confused about, um, the situation.
That's a fair question. Uh, and the answer is yes, there are, there's, there's at least a couple hundred lots that have already been sold off and then with two recorded plats and subdivision improvements in place. And they are also building the multifamily side right now. There is a, when the, when the development agreement was written, it was not part of the development agreement to have a timeframe in place for, uh, the applicant, the developer, to apply for zoning. Development agreements moving forward do. And generally, the ones before that did too. For some reason, it was not put in the agreement and it has, I won't say blown up, but it's, it's got us to this point to where it's like, okay, we, it needs to be, it needs to be fixed. And this is the way to fix it. So, uh, they, the development agreement said they were allowed to submit plans and what have you and do their project because they, in effect, they have their entitlements from a zoning perspective. They, they can build to the R1A zoning district for the single family. They can build to the R32 zoning district for the multifamily and to develop the 1.5 acres for retail services at a time that's appropriate. And plus the amendments that are built into the code for their project. Um, and it references the zoning that they will have. But again, it doesn't put a stipulate timeframe that they have to do it. And for example, so Councilmember Floris Kell, if the applicant, the developer were to come and request a rezoning and they were to have to get paperwork from every single property owner that they've already sold to, that would be a landowner authorization form, a deed, uh, in some cases, um, the franchise tax account status for some of those lots, because undoubtedly, there's probably some in there that are owned by corporations or, or LLCs for, for rental purposes. And so the amount of paperwork involved with that, when the zoning should have been complete very early on, but it hadn't been because we couldn't legally enforce it, we couldn't force them to come to the table because of the way the development agreement was written, the, it's a lot more efficient for staff to resolve it, um, from the city side initiating the zoning. So, that's why it's coming forward. We're not changing anything about the actual site or anything like that. They can already do everything that they're already allowed to do with the zoning slash the development agreement and the two amendments that are associated with it. So, it's just a...
I don't mean to interrupt. I get, I get what you're saying. So I guess my concern is, this was signed in 2017 and they chose to wait five years. And now that it's been five years and there are more people involved, the city's gonna make it easier for them. I don't know if I necessarily agree with that. It wasn't our fault that they didn't build within five years. Had they started building, say, even within two years? I mean, I know what you're saying, like, usually after three years, if they don't build, then it, it goes away. But there's also consequences for them waiting five years. So I guess my question is, what do we want those consequences, if any, to look like? Because I'm not impressed with the fact that they took so long.
So...
Let's get Paige involved at this point. So, I don't know if Paige, you know, so the, the question is, that it's, we're trying to, uh, uh, unilaterally as a city, apply a zoning to be consistent with the development agreement. Uh, if we, um, they're already building, if we just chose not to do that, uh, would they be forced to stop? Would that be a consequence? Or would they be allowed to continue building? What would the consequence be?
But if they're authorized to, for those land uses, if those land uses are authorized under the development agreement, they can continue with those unless there's something in the agreement that says, you know, you've gotta do something within a certain period of time and you have... you've got to do something within a certain period of time and you haven't done it, so it expires. But usually, that's not a zoning issue. It's a, it's not a zoning based issue. So the fact that they didn't apply for zoning probably does not change that. I don't have the agreement in front of me, so I can't answer specifically. But the answer is if you don't zone them, they can continue to develop under the development agreement with the land uses they have until the development agreement says otherwise. And then they'll have inconsistent zoning, they'll have non-conforming uses. And that could be confusing from the staff perspective of issuing permits and enforcing permits and those types of issues. I don't know if it would affect their title or not. I don't know if it affects conveyance of property. If it comes up in a title, that part I don't know. But I flag it as, it could, it could affect.
So is this something that they brought on themselves and we're just trying to be nice and fix it? And then when I say, let me rephrase that. Because they waited so long, is that what brings up this issue?
Because there, it's been delayed so long from them applying for the zoning, which should have been done early on, the the amount of paperwork, and I'm not trying to say it to get out of doing paperwork. We do paperwork all day, every day in our department. That's just the norm, right? But the onslaught of paperwork that would have to be generated for us to check every single item if they were to apply is so astronomical.
Right, but hang on, Will. What you're saying, if they were to apply for zoning for each individual platted lot. But the question is, if if we just don't give them their zoning, then they're not, it's impossible to get all 100 landowners to all apply for zoning to fix this issue. This is the only solution at this point. But if we chose not to apply this solution, what would happen then? Why is it coming forward now? Why are you bringing this forward?
We're just trying to make it more consistent with what the agreement already shows. And then whenever lenders do call, which they do, we can give them a much better answer, one that's more wrapped up and cleaned up. It's a cleaning up of this project.
I imagine it's easier from the city's standpoint for the zoning and the land uses to be consistent just from a regulatory perspective, knowing what people can and can't do on their property. Because they don't, they can just look at the zoning and they don't have to go to the development agreement. So there's probably some benefit or a lot of benefit to the city.
No, I wanted, like, for the staff and employees, I would vote yes for this. But what I'm saying is, we can't have developers doing this. And I'm going to vote yes, but my concern is, like, we got to make sure that this, the developers don't, you know, you know, yeah, make it a habit or feel like they got overrun.
To be clear, in the in the years 2015, 16, and 17, as we, Intermandico or Paramount, I believe, was the third PID we ever did. The first one was Button Creek that ended in a lawsuit. The second one was, that was from like 2013, that was before my time. But we created PID policies as a result. We didn't have any PID administrators on staff. There's all kinds of issues with it, right? So this is an example, like you notice now, we try to bring development agreements, zonings, entitlements, all to the table at the same time. We're doing that now because we learned these lessons with Intermandico. I heard about this a long, long time ago, but there was just nothing to, nothing to be done other than what we're doing now. So I agree with you. It sucks. But at the same time, we're almost going to punish ourselves if we don't approve it. And the lesson is learned and the processes that we have in place now, like, when's the last time we approved a development agreement without a zoning? I mean, we've done it twice tonight, development agreement, zoning, together. So, I mean, we have learned that that lesson and Will wasn't even the planning, you know, he wasn't even on staff at all back then, you know.
I don't blame Will for this at all. I'm not saying, yeah, I'm just saying, I'm not trying to benefit and bend for the developer who waited five years.
Well, I don't think the developer probably cares what, which way we do. I mean, they're not here.
Well, he would have to collect, like, the information from all the lots, which is like 100. And the bad part is our staff will have to process that paperwork. But the responsibility to collect all that would be on the developer.
Yeah.
So we are, we are doing a good, we're doing a favor for them, and I hope they understand that.
If I could add, Ms. Floris Kell, if you've driven out there, they have already torn up the roads. They've already cut down all those oak trees. They've leveled all that land. And it's just like a dry desert with just homes are popping up. So it's, we're at the point now to where we're just kind of like unscrewing something that was screwed up in a way. So from councils' past, not saying councils' past, but just from the development standpoint. And you're right, Mayor, we're learning our lessons. We're taking the hits. We're taking the punches with these kind of things. And things are popping up. Oh, that, we haven't signed off on this for five years ago or seven years ago. But we have policies in place now.
Right.
And so this is when we're doing the DAs and stuff like that.
I wish y'all could have been on the council five or six years ago because at that point in time, the the stuff we were dealing with from previous councils before that would have liked, you know, so it, we're getting better as a city, but this still sucks.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item 31.
All right, motion by Mayor Protem, seconded by Councilmember Bradshaw. We approve Agenda Item 31. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries six to zero. All right, next up is Item 32. I have a conflict on this one. Mayor Protem.
Right now, my computer starts acting up. All right, this item, 32. All right, the first reading and ordinance amending Chapter 53 zoning of the City of Kyle, Texas, for the purpose of rezoning approximately 5.43 acres of land from A Agriculture to RS Retail for the property located approximately 450 feet north of the intersection by 35 and Old Bridge Trail in Hayes County, Texas, Sunrise Village Investments LLC. Will Atkinson, Director of Planning, this is your item. This item does have a public hearing. Do you want to present, Will, and then we'll open up the public hearing?
Yes, sir. Will Atkinson, for the record, Director of Planning. Petition number Z-22-0107. They're requesting to rezone approximately, a little less than five and a half acres from ag to retail services along the Interstate Frontage Road. It's approximately 450 feet northeast of HUB, right across from the intersection of BB Road, which is between Kyle Crossing and IH35 Frontage Road. The retail services zoning district, this is straight zoning. It's not a putt or anything like that. Along the interstate highway is a perfectly good zoning district for point-of-sale service, restaurants, office, grocery store, you name it. Those service uses that you can see that that'll generate sales tax revenue. The uniqueness about this site is, is that it will be at the southern end along a portion of the vibe trail. So they will have to build a portion of the trail itself hooking into their property and will need to design accordingly, regardless of what the end user is going to be. There is a little bit of floodplain also in that southern portion, but they will not be able to develop within the the development itself of the building, the parking lot and stuff like that in the floodplain. And so they'll have to account for that accordingly as well at the site development permit. From staff's perspective, it's a smaller site and it's perfectly acceptable for the retail services. And we're excited to see a project with another component of the vibe trail system. So staff recommends approval of this and we ask the chair to approve it as well.
Okay.
Any questions?
So we now have a public hearing on this. I'll now open the public hearing. The public hearing is now open. Anyone wishing to comment, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll now close the public hearing. Any discussion?
Mayor Protem, I would like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item number 32.
We have a motion.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Bradshaw and a second by Councilmember Tobias. Any discussion? Councilmember Kell.
All right, so I'm kind of hesitant because this is like a prime location. And I want to make sure whatever we stick in here, and I know we can't vote based on that, but I'm really nervous to rezone without any kind of, like, is there like a development agreement? Is there anything that the city can use in order to utilize or to utilize in order to, like, control this area, which for me is is one of the most prestigious parts of the city because it's right off of 35? So I guess, is there a development agreement?
Yes, ma'am. There's not a development agreement, but this is in the IH35 overlay. So it will have to be required to develop architecturally to those standards, which preceded the House bill from 2018 that took away our powers otherwise from architectural standpoint. And then it also has, within the IH35 overlay, within related sections to that, it also has higher standards for site development permits as well. So you got those two components, plus the vibe-related items tying into that. And then we also, as you know, back in May, passed restrictions on on uses related to car washes and additional gas stations as well. So those, at least those two uses will be limited by default from a use perspective.
All right, I appreciate that information.
I have a quick question, Will. So in that Section 53-481, it talks about the conditions and limitations. It says the conditions and limitations and uses in the RS district are as follows. To be, the use be conducted wholly within an enclosed building except for. That means those, those uses right there cannot be done. The delivery, catering, gasoline sale, plant nursery, garden centers, outdoor dining, outdoor display of merchandise.
So that's a, that's a section of our code that's all the way back from 2003, I believe. The ordinance number 438. So these are uses that are by right allowed to be outside. Now, these proceeded to our gas station ordinance that happened back in May. So technically, the gasoline one wouldn't be allowed because there's, the A has a, has a gas station close enough to it. But, you know, plant nursery, like Lowe's or garden center, outdoor dining, so you have your little outdoor patios and what have you, if it's designed appropriately. Outdoor display of merchandise, that in itself, the outdoor display of merchandise, typically we require those items to go back inside at the end of the night.
Okay.
I think there's code elsewhere unrelated to zoning, but.
Will outdoor dining be allowed?
Where or will it?
Will it be? Will it be allowed? I just want to make sure that if it is such a prime location that we we are able to have outdoor dining. So I'm not quite understanding if, are we allowed to have it or not? Because the gas station was there, but you say that the gas station supersedes because we just made the rule about the gas stations, correct? So if they were to pick outdoor dining, it will be allowed in this location?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
So like, if there was a business that had that, that restaurant, they could have that outdoor dining or that patio. I have seen some gas stations that are, or service stations that are coming up in Austin that are having their actual restaurant inside the store and then they actually have an outdoor dining. That's like a travel, mini travel center kind of deal. Also, for people who are working, construction or wherever, they actually can go in and buy the food and then have outdoor seating along with service station and everything else. So, but to go by, if you don't mind, Mayor Protem, going by what you're saying, Ms. Floris Kell, this is why I understand the concern about the retail. We want to be very picky about what's there. I think this hits back to the Stagecoach situation to where, like what Will's saying, we have ordinances in place, we have requirements in place now. We have things or items or DA agreements that we can get businesses to say this going forward. This is what's to be expected from the city, especially in this area. So I think with with this here, you're right, it is on a frontage, it's actually off of 35. But I think we now, by approving something like this, we can really gain a business that might be really wanting to be be there as far as providing some kind of product or services for for people in that area or just right off the highway.
Any other discussion? An entertaining motion? Oh, you had a motion, we had a motion and a second, that's right. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Five oh, we'll call the mayor back. He had to recuse himself because of conflict of interest and he's back. Here he is.
Everybody.
All right, next up is Agenda Item number 33. Discussion and possible action regarding update the policy on appointments for city boards, committees, and commissions. Councilmember Parsley.
So after the last meeting, when we appointed new members or reappointed members who are boards and commissions, I realized really how dysfunctional the process is. And I feel like the process doesn't allow for the right people to be involved in the selection process. I don't think the rules are clearly stated clearly. And the last thing I think that we need is to have residents that want to really help show up to the meeting and then be voted no on the public meeting. And then having residents that are highly qualified for not being in the meeting then be voted no to. So I was trying to make a comparison of the newly adopted policy and the older policy. And I would like to suggest that we do some changes. So I know the Section 4 of the new policy, I would like that to be gone. And I apologize that I didn't submit any backup material, but I don't know if we can bring it up. But what I would really like to propose is that we do a selection, we do a panel of people that will do interviews. And the panel should be, who should be in that panel? My my suggestion will be city manager or an assistant city manager, director related to the board and a council member to be a part of the panel, those three people. I would like then that council member to be voted in a regular meeting to see which council member is going to be part of each panel. My next suggestion will be for the panel to screen applications to make sure they meet the basic criteria that is stated by the charter. And then the panel to do interviews on all qualified applicants and make a recommendation to council to appoint the selected applicants. That will be my suggestion. I think that the last two meetings have been quite a disaster, so.
Any discussion on the suggestion? Councilmember Floris Kell.
That is eerily similar to what we just changed. I don't know, maybe, I don't, I don't know if we want to try it again. I do agree it was kind of a mess. I don't know if, as a council, we're doing it the way that it was actually intended because I'm guilty of not watching the San Marcos City Council, which I think this was based on. But I don't know if that process that you just, that you just discussed is the answer because that is exactly what we just moved away from. But I agree that there's some changes that need to be made. I just don't know how we would go about making those changes because that's, that's literally going right back. So and if that's what we want to do, I understand that.
There's two, there's two differences. The, so difference number one was the, that she didn't include the chair of the board of the, so that that chair is not, wouldn't be there. So there'd be no representation from the board itself in the interview process. And number two, the original policy had the mayor designate. So it distinguished the mayor. But what she, what I heard Councilmember Parsley propose is that we, as a group, vote and assign council members to individual interview panels so that if, so that there's no ambiguity about who's supposed to be there and we all agree on who that person is. So hopefully, the the main issue from before, as I saw it, was there was perceived too much probably influence on my part related to planning and zoning, which was the the primary issue and a lack of folks that didn't get interviewed. So, and that was the third, the third change, so, which is that all qualified applicants must be interviewed. But I just, I agree with Councilmember Parsley in in particular to have some kind of panel that allows for a process to be put in place where interviews can take place so that really important questions can be asked of the applicants that you don't find out just by giving them an application. Like, for example, in the parks board, asking folks if they know about our parks master plan or if they know about, if they can even name the parks that we have. That was one of the things. Or for planning and zoning, are they familiar with the comprehensive plan? What is the role of of planning and zoning in your view? And be able to get, and, you know, find out whether or not the applicants, can you make the meetings? It's a, it's a, you know, a great question. And the the setting that we have, where we bring 30 people into a room, is not, is not an appropriate setting to try to actually. appropriate setting to try to actually interview and vet, and it's not fair to them to make them all interview in front of us like that.
No, I think we can all agree on that. I don't think any of us want that because it was really awkward. But the first suggestion I thought, it would have been brought to council the first time to add that chair. And so I do think that's a good idea, but I thought it got voted down last time. Just to brainstorm some ideas, I don't know if, maybe we all get access to the applications and we pick our top three, and then maybe send them to Jennifer, and then we can narrow them down by that instead of, I mean, interviewing every single one of them? That might be a little bit tedious.
Councilmember Brett Schell.
First, thank you. This needed to be brought forward. Secondly, I don't think that we are going to be able to come to an agreement in any sort of good timing this evening. So with that said, I do like your suggestions, by the way. However, I would opt out of being on a panel. I just don't, and also, I think that you would run into the issue if there are a different amount of boards and commissions than there are council members, one maybe on more than one board of commission panel, and just, you know, the imbalance there. But with all of that said, in the way, I would like to make a motion to reconvene a task force to bring back a recommended policy.
Motion by Councilmember Brett Schell, seconded by Councilmember Floris Kale, that we create a task force to bring back a policy. There's a discussion on that motion.
Yeah.
We're gonna need to, sorry, we're gonna need to figure out who's gonna be on it. So, Mayor Proton.
Okay. So one of the things, real quick, is to make sure is that, I think if we put a task force together, it's probably a good idea, because then we're not just wiping out all the work that we've done. Maybe we can codify some of the things and fix them.
That's how it happened the last time.
Yeah.
It wasn't a task force, it got wiped out.
Yeah, yeah. But let's see what happens. I mean, let's go up, live and learn, right? So we've gone through the process, it didn't work as well as we thought. What can we do to make it work a little better? And that's something we can do. One of the things I did like that Councilmember brought up was about bringing council appointing, you know, whoever sits on these boards and commissions. I know that I sat on a couple of, you know, of these commissions as well for hiring you. I was on the library board and the Parks Board. So I understand what it's like to be on more than one, but now it's council picking, it's not just somebody, you know, one person picking, somebody that sits on these panels. I kind of like that idea, I think it's a great idea, but let's bring it back, let's brainstorm through it. And it's not something we're gonna vote on tonight, so it's something we can work on and try to bring something back.
Can we at least, like, vote on who's gonna be on the task force to get that going?
Yeah.
An amendment to the motion, so we can just have a single vote, but.
Who's interested?
Yeah. As you know, I was, I brought this up with Dex last time, and, you know, we had our discussions, and I was on the original task force. You know, those were ideas that we did come up with on our task force, remember, of having the Parks Board, whoever's in charge, P&amp;Z, or if it was P&amp;Z, let's say, Gera would be one of the interviewers along with the city manager, or along with assistant city manager, and then, of course, somebody else. Should, I mean, yeah, those were the ideas we had, and I'm willing to pass it on to the next person on that end. But would you consider possibly waiting until after the election, until we get the new person on board?
Absolutely.
Whether whoever it is.
We're just doing the task force right now.
I understand, but that person as well, that person would be their first assignment, in a way.
Okay.
If anybody would like to wait for that. But yes, to design a task force, but once the next meeting, the new person's on board, if they would be interested, in that way, it's fair.
No offense, but if a brand-new person is elected, you know, we're the ones who've dealt, you know, we're starting to get, you know, some experience, and we've just dealt with the problems.
It's just a recommendation, it's just a suggestion.
I agree. I agree that the new person, the new member should be involved. I joined the task force on my second meeting, and I messed up.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
We did not, we did not make this ordinance.
But the suggestion that you're bringing now, that everybody's agreeing on, is what we all came together with, and you gave your input, even though you were two weeks in.
Yeah.
So what you're suggesting now, and Ms. Brett Schell agrees, and everybody else agrees, yes, look at that. Those were part of the task force that you and I and Floris Kale, those were the ideas that we came up with you barely one month in.
I understand. All I say is, like, we saw what happened, and it's not working, so let's try to make it better. So I agree with you. Maybe we do need to wait until the new person is in. So I'll be willing to postpone that. So can we?
Can we make a motion to bring it back at a certain time?
Yeah.
Well, we are in a position where there likely will be a runoff, so it wouldn't be until the end of the year or January.
But we don't have any, we don't have to do any, the boards and commissions until next year.
I think we're just voting on designing a task force right now.
It's good to win a fifty-some percent.
Well, but I'm, so I'm trying to make sure I'm clear as to what, I like the idea of waiting till after the election so the new person can have input, but as far as the task force, I think as a group, we have gone through, we had the old policy, we changed it, now we're recognizing that changes need to be made. I think we are very equipped to bring forward something, doesn't have to be anyone, I'm not saying I have to be on the task force, it could be any of us, but I'm just, do we really want to wait and then put that, put the brand-new person on the task force to create a revision to the boards and commissions policy? And if so, why? Why does that need to?
We need new ideas, new ideas. Because I don't know if, do we even have four, three people that want to be on a task force?
It doesn't have to be three people.
I was burnt out.
I guess it's not a matter of having that person on, but just when we finally have a new team, whatever the team is, and then this is gonna be a policy and a procedure that this person will eventually vote on as well, when we make these, because we're gonna have to make them unanimously. I'm just stating that, you know, if you guys want to go ahead and get your three people, by all means, but I'm just saying, we're just one couple of weeks away before we have somebody new on board.
Right. Well, I agree. To be clear, I agree with you. So I might be just splitting hairs, so I'll just be quiet. All right, so.
But as far as voting for a task force to be formed, yes, I would support that. As far as who's on it, that could be at a later time.
You want me to amend my motion with a date to bring back the?
I think just rescind the motion, and we just move on, and Councilmember Parsley can bring him back after the election. So we don't have to, we don't have to be too technical with it.
I rescind my motion to, oh, I don't even.
Create a task force.
Thank you. Create a task force.
All right. So that motion is rescinded. Any other discussion on this item? All right. We're gonna move on to our last item is Agenda Item 35, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Renaming of the Public Safety Center. Councilmember Floris Kale.
All right. Thank you. And I want to preface with, I am not trying to undo the hard work that has gone into the creation of this amazing building. And what I would like to see is a reference to our city's police department in some capacity on the public safety center. While I was discussing the public safety center with a resident, they mentioned a possible safety issue regarding the lack of signage referencing a police department on the building. There was two concerns. One was, will Google, say somebody needs to Google a police department in Kyle, what will that Google generate? Will it generate a police department or a public safety center? If Google does reference a police department, but the building states public safety center, will it deter or delay people from receiving safety services? So just out of curiosity, I Googled, like, public safety center, and one of the first things that pulled up was the Austin Community College Public Safety Training Center. And then I also Googled, oops, I Googled, like, safety center in general throughout the United States, and I could not find one that had, that was like a police department. A lot of them had, like, training centers, a lot of them had call centers, or, you know, something that doesn't affiliate with the police officers. And so my thought was to somehow incorporate police department slash public safety center, or, I mean, I don't know if anybody would be totally on board for police department, but I feel like that building is gonna be more. I'm always gonna be in favor of police department, because I feel like that's gonna be less confusing for people who are looking for our police department building.
Well, to be clear, when we took this item to the voters, we took it with a great deal of publicity calling it the Public Safety Center. We took it as a vote, we took a vote in that way. So I just want to say, like, we propositioned the voters on Public Safety Center. The voters agreed with Public Safety Center at that time. So.
That was not in the bond language, though. I looked that up. So actually, it said police department, and then it had.
It was in every document and every public information that we put forward and voted on, and all plans, and all gener, and all renderings, and all news articles. It's just what we've called it from the very beginning. And so, and that was done intentionally at that time. And so it feels to me a little bit disingenuous for us to call it that, present it to the voters in that way, and then right at the end, go back and change the name of it, so.
Yeah. I don't know anybody that I've spoken with that feels that way, and I can pull up the bond information, which I think, it was pretty general, but I think overall, it was really pushed as a police department. And so I don't, I can't imagine there's gonna be a lot of kickback about, hey, you said this was gonna be a public safety center, which.
Okay.
I can't say it was in all, everything, but.
I also don't think that anybody's gonna have any confusion. If you Google, you know, Kyle Police Department, it's gonna bring up the Kyle Police Department.
No, I understand that, but what do they pull up? And it doesn't say it on the building? And then they're like, okay, well, is this the police department?
It says, it says Public Safety Center, big and bright.
My whole point, like, it doesn't say.
One minute of time, and please wait to be recognized, or please.
All right. Yeah. Councilmember Parsley.
Can we call it Public Safety Center, and then Kyle Police Department on the bottom, at least, or like in an arch, or something like that?
That was my original ask, like, how do we incorporate both of them? Sorry.
Mayor Proton.
Okay. So just to give you all a little history, there was a lot of reasons, discussions that early council had on naming it. One of the things that I definitely, we shied away from was Justice Center, and one reason we shied away from Justice Center early on was because there was a lot of high-profile cases at the time that were innocent people had gone to jail, and the Justice Center was the logo you saw when they're being released, and it just seemed like justice hadn't been served there. We wanted this to be a place for our police department, but also a reminder that all of us work for the public. This building belongs to the public, it doesn't belong to council, it doesn't belong to anybody else, it belongs to the public, but we wanted to give the officers their due diligence as well. So we called it the Public Safety Center, but I think even moving forward to address some of the needs is, I would love to see police department somewhere on that building, and the reason why is because it is, eventually it's just gonna be our police department, but it's always gonna be the Public Safety Center, because that building is of the people, it belongs to the people, our officer is housed there, it's their building, and it's moving forward. I'd love to see something. I know Chief and I worked on the design a little bit as the task force, the original task force worked on something on the gateway sign coming into the building, having Public Safety Center on it, a couple of badges on it as well on each side to signify that it is the police department. Could you check and make sure that's happening, Jerry, if you wouldn't mind making sure those badges are going on there? We had talked about lighting them up as well to make them visible at night with a blue light behind them, the two badges there. But I think I'd be amenable to adding police department to it just to signify it. But one of the things we can do, as well as the city, is make sure that we contact all the Google apps, any website that we need to, to make sure when they look up city of Kyle Police Department, that that building comes up, and it's also recognized, not just as Public Safety Center, as a police department as well. That's something we can do, our due diligence on as a city. So, but it's just my ideas, this is up to council, so whatever council wants to do, I'm good with, but I definitely want to keep the Public Safety Center name on it, because that's how we've always addressed it from day one, but adding the police department to it would not, I don't think, affect that in any way.
Councilmember Brett Schell.
No, I'm sorry, I'm just.
So, but you're saying you want it to be called the Kyle Public Safety Center, and then underneath the Kyle Police Department?
No, no, no. We could just add police on the building. So it's still the Kyle Public Safety Center, but we could put a logo recognizing the police, just saying police, or something like that, somewhere on the building. We're not, we're not, we're not changing the name of the building. Still the Kyle Public Safety Center, but to signify that our police are there as well, having that logo, I'm sorry.
Not to speak into the mic, but having that logo there as well, having something that says police also on the building would be something we could do. I mean, it's a large building. I mean, there's something we can do there.
Well, my idea was gonna be like Kyle Police Department and Public Safety Center, so not putting one above the other, or, you know, just kind of having it equal, because like, like Councilmembers O'Shea said, at the end of the day, this is gonna end up being, you know, a police department, so I don't, I can't see that there's any harm in doing that. But incorporating both, because I do understand there was a lot of work put in here on, you know, council members' ends, and so I don't want to take away from that. But I also want to make sure people understand that this is our police department and our Public Safety Center, because we have a lot to offer from that building.
Other discussion? Councilmember Tobias.
Again, just throwing out ideas, still keep Public Safety Center, home of the Kyle Police Department, or city of Kyle Police Station somewhere listed in there. And it can be addressed to where there could be signage stating Kyle Police Department or Station. Well, I think in general, what Councilmember Rezo was trying to get at is, when you named it that, it is for the public, it is for safety, it is to have people, like, we are bringing awareness this month about domestic violence, that people can come to this place and get safety, whatever it is, to feel safe, to feel like if they're, they can come into an area where they can feel that way. And then also, my overall thought was, it was also gonna be a center, a center to where the community can come together for town meetings, for training sessions, and so forth. That was the idea that I originally had as well for this. And also bring other departments and agencies to our department, to the building, for training style classes and so forth. But again, I know we push for the Public Safety Center, the name itself, I do feel that, yes, somewhere along the lines, we can add Kyle Police Station somewhere. I'd just like to be able to finally see it built before we start making a lot of these physical changes.
Your march.
Man, I couldn't agree with that more.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to direct staff to maybe bring back signage for the Public Safety Center incorporating the Kyle Police Department verbiage on the building.
All right. There's a motion by Councilmember Floris Kale, seconded by Councilmember Parsley, to direct staff to bring back a proposal for signage related to the Public Safety Center to incorporate the police department. Is there a discussion on the motion?
Yeah, I've got this question. Yeah, just real quick. Griffin, while you're here, would you mind if I called you up for it, please? I'm gonna lean on your experience, as an officer. So what the discussion is to, I think using Kyle too much on the building would be an overkill. I'd probably be amenable to putting police, like, Public Safety Center on one side, police on the other. Do you think there would be a difference if we did Kyle Police or just police on one side? I'm just thinking, if we use Kyle too many times, it's just overkill.
Yeah, I mean, since we're in the city of Kyle, I don't think that would be a problem.
So just putting police on there? That's kind of what I was thinking, or, because it's a large building.
But you're talking about changing the main name from Public Safety Center, so staff needs to understand what the direction is here.
So direction, this is what I'm bringing, there's already motions, I can't redo the motion, but what I'm saying is that we do the Public Safety Center, but somewhere on the other side of the building, put police on it, on the police side, put police that the police are utilizing right now, because eventually the entire building's gonna be theirs, right? So, but right now, let's put somewhere on that building that says police.
Put your emblem.
From the Kyle Public Safety.
Put your emblem, city badge emblem.
But doesn't, we call them KPD, it should say Kyle Police Department.
Yeah, but you're gonna put Kyle too many times on the building.
Well, how many times? We're just saying Public Safety Center, Kyle Police Department.
Can we just put city of Kyle up top, and then put police department and public safety center?
Right. But that is a renaming. Right, but that is a, that is a renaming of the facility at its absolute core. So I think we're trying to pretend like you're not, but we are.
Right, that was, that was my intent and that was what I made a motion for and that is what I place on the agenda. What I'm trying to do is I'm not just trying to take off the public safety center, I'm trying to add it so it is because in true fashion, it is a police department and a public safety center. So it's being more definitive instead of to generalize, which I think can confuse people who may be in need of, of safety.
Just, just to finish up all my thoughts. Yeah, thank you, thank you, Griffin. Appreciate it. So just to finish my thought, I think keeping it Kyle Public Safety Center is what I would be amenable to. And then putting off to the side, in the same size lettering, putting police, because they incorporate the right side of the building. So that way people know that it's the police department and also the public safety center, so.
Right, but so that's the thing. If you direct staff to bring it back, the direction should be to rename it.
It should be here. What we're going to do is here. So what I, I'm not asking to rename the building. What I'm asking, but there's already a motion on the floor, so remind, remember the motion. What I'm asking is to keep the Kyle Public Safety Center on there and then over on the police department side, right, put police on there that they're occupying right now up on the building as well. So that way residents know that it's a police department, but also the Kyle Public Safety Center.
Well, I think we have, we have seven different ideas of what the direction to staff is for them to, to bring back. So I just, I don't know what staff is going to do. Jerry, I mean, you know.
I can confirm my, my motion and then we can vote on it and then we can decide if that's how we want to move forward.
It should be to rename it because that's, that's essentially what I know you want to do. If you're trying to take the biggest name, you're trying to take the literal masthead on the building and say, instead of it being the Kyle Public Safety Center for it to read the Kyle Police Department and Public Safety Center.
My idea would be like City of Kyle and then Police Department and Public Safety Center because that is ultimately what it is. If I wanted to rename it completely, I would just say, I'd like to make a motion to name it a police department.
Councilmember Bradshaw.
I'm not really sure what all, what all this is about, but I would like to hear Chief and his opinion before making any changes or voting for any motion.
I, see, that's not what I wanted. I didn't want it to become political because I think putting Chief in that spot would make it really uncomfortable for him. And I've been told time and time again the same thing when I called Captain Hernandez up here. I want this to be a decision based off of council and our thoughts on how we should move forward with this building.
I agree with that. And the reason I, the reason I agree with that is because it is political, because I've had multiple officers complain that it was to me, that it was called a public safety center when they wanted it to be called Kyle Police Department. I've known that for two years, that that was something they wish we had named it different.
But that's not even what I'm doing. I'm not naming it just a police department. I get, I totally understand that it's more than that.
Right, but we went through this two years ago. We made a decision to name it something at that time. You could put, there's a lot of different ways, but when you're talking about changing the main sign as opposed to putting a, putting a sign, you know, Kyle Police Department this direction or having it on the side of the building or some other way. But you're talking about changing the, what's already designed in the approved construction documents moving forward. I'm sure it's already even ordered. They're down to just a few months away from construction. And so to go, to go and change it right now, just, you know, it sucks. And I don't want to have to, I don't even want to have to discuss it in, in front of the officers because I know they all have feelings about this. So it's just one of those things where we've already gone through this, you know, multiple times.
Well, I mean, if it were me and I discussed it prior to, it would just be a police department. And I'm pretty sure that's what Councilmember Rizzo said when he said he's going to stop kicking that can down the road and they're going to build a police department. So please understand that we are all kind of bending as well. Like, it was the intent to make it a police department. It, now where it's like, okay, now it's a public safety center. We agreed to that and I'm not saying no. But what I'm saying is we should also name it what it is, which is a police department and a public safety center.
Can we, may I ask, if we have already ordered the sign, that we can order an additional sign, maybe on a smaller scale, that we can place in another visible area of the building that says Kyle Police Department? Simple.
Well, that is the direction, that is the motion on the table.
I'm not saying like changes, just whatever the main sign was going to go.
I'm just asking that we.
We will find a place.
I'm agreeable to adding Kyle Police Department. I am, I totally am, and making it clear. Because to me, it's not the Kyle Police Department. It is a building and inside that building, the Kyle Police Department resides. And currently, they take up two-thirds of the facility. Eventually, they're going to take up all the facility.
Okay.
So why would we not call it a police department then? Why would we not reference that?
Because it is a public safety center. That's the facility and inside it, the police department resides.
There's no fear that like, people aren't going to understand?
None, zero.
I, I genuinely have a concern.
There are public safety centers all over. It is a very common phrase. But, so I'm just, what I'm asking is if we'll compromise on it as opposed to it being put into the main sign that we've already agreed and promoted to the public, that we could add it somewhere, but just not changing the name of the public safety center as the Police Department and Public Safety Center. But allow for the police department to be promoted, but just allow for the main name that we named it to remain. Which is what I thought you said you wanted to do.
Well, I think the police do kind of make it. No, well, my exact is discussion of possible action regarding renaming of the public safety center. So it's not that I, it's not that I don't want public safety center on there. I want to name the building what ultimately it is, which is a police department and a public safety center. And if, this is just directing staff to bring back renderings and we can look at it and we can figure it out. It doesn't have to be, tonight, we don't have to figure out exactly what it's going to look like. Give, give staff the opportunity to, to bring back some ideas because it seems like you're upset that you think this police department is going to be written big all over and people are going to forget that it's a public safety center. I don't want that any more than you do.
Councilmember Bradshaw. All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Motion fails. Do you want to get Councilmember Parsley? I'm not trying to do that to her. I don't think she realized what was about to happen, so. Yeah, so I'm just, I'm just against it because I've got, I do have a motion and I've spent a lot of years on this thing, so.
I understand that and that's why I didn't.
Yeah, we voted without Councilmember Parsley knowing she was gone. We definitely need to wait.
If somebody wants to grab her, I'm not trying to stop the vote. It's just my, it's just my opinion. I don't want to rename it, so.
Okay, I'll wait.
I'm sorry, Mayor, could you repeat the, the motion again one more time, please?
The motion's to direct staff to bring back new signage that incorporates the police department into the name.
Okay, hold on.
Is there a second?
Yeah, it's, it's on, we're going to have to reconsider it because it was three to two.
Yeah, so let's, let's go back to the motion. So what was, what's the original motion?
First, let's motion to reconsider and take a vote on that if we want to do that.
No, I'm just ready to vote. I'd like to call a question, please.
There's no motion on the table. You can't call a question.
Well, okay, then I'd like to re, who's going to reconsider?
Make a motion to reconsider.
I'd like to make a motion to reconsider.
All right, second, motion by Councilmember Flores Cale, seconded by the mayor. Is there a discussion on the motion?
Yeah, so earlier, I thought we were voting on a name change already. That's why I voted no on it because I thought we were changing the name of the building. So I'm not interested in changing the name of the building. I'm interested in giving, you know, adding to the building its concept. So calling it the Kyle Public Safety Center, you don't have to roll your eyes, I'm sorry. But calling it the Kyle Public Safety Center is what we've always originally voted. But I do, in speaking with officers, they have asked to have on their end of the building, police written on it. And that's what they're asking for, police. All the officers that I've spoken to, it was about putting police on that end. And that's something that I'm amenable to and I, I'd love to see put on there. Even whatever happens tonight, I'd love to see police on that side of the building.
Okay, so we need to vote on the motion to reconsider the agenda item first before we discuss. So, what's that?
She made the motion and then we're, I think.
Right, so.
No, he's mayor's second.
Right, so all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion carries five to zero. So now the, the item is back for, so what I would like is for, back before us, but what I would like for us to do is to be clear. Right now, there are two different thoughts. One is to rename it Kyle Police Department and Public Safety Center. The other discussion that I keep hearing is to allow for the Kyle Public Safety Center to remain, but to include on the building elsewhere, Kyle Police Department. Those are two very different thoughts. Staff cannot make that decision. As has been noted, we need to make that decision. So are we renaming it Kyle Police Department and Public Safety Center and bringing back renderings to that effect? Or are we putting Kyle Police Department elsewhere on the building to make sure that it is known that the police department exists at the public safety center?
So my motion was for the first, the first of the two. And I'm going to say that because I feel like that eventually is going to be all police. And so having the public safety center on there is, is just as important as having a police in there. I don't want to make one bigger than the other. I don't understand that.
So, so the motion needs to be to rename the public safety center, the Kyle Police Department and Public Safety Center, and direct staff to bring back signage on the building to that effect? If that's what you want, if that's what you want to do and that's what council, councils will is? That's clear.
I have a question about that. So you're saying that option one would be just call it Public Safety Center, Kyle Police Department, just one whole thing?
No, no, she's, Yvonne's saying Kyle Police Department and Safety Center.
And Public Safety Center would be the new name.
Okay, what I was thinking of is just like in a rainbow, City of Kyle and then maybe like Police and Public Safety Center or Police Department and Public Safety Center.
But that's the new name, whatever you want to say.
Yes, that's my idea. At the end of the day, yes, that's my idea.
I was assuming that we will have, you know, Public Safety Center and like, you know, rainbow Kyle Police Department at the entrance.
Yeah, I'm okay with that, too.
I, I don't know what is, what would be wrong with that?
That's not what she's proposing. She's proposing to rename the.
That, that will be my motion. I'd like to make a motion to have a signage that says Public Safety Center and have additional signage that says Kyle Police Department.
Second, yep, I like that.
All right, motion by Councilmember Parsley, seconded by Councilmember Flores Cale. Is there a discussion on the motion?
Can we bring back renderings for us to look at?
Yeah, but so, but are you, you're trying to say you're doing that but not renaming it?
No, just don't rename it, just like add the additional signage that says Kyle Police Department. So if people are driving by, they know, oh, there's a police department. Oh, that's a public safety center and the police department.
Yep, I like that idea.
Just adding police department on the bottom.
Kyle Police Department.
On the building. It's not, it's not an archway right now. It's designed by the architects as a straight across.
I will have to take a look and see, but I want to see the Kyle Police Department in a manner that it looks like it's, it's all together. I don't know if the name needs to be changed, but I do think additional signage needs to happen in the building so people know that's the police department.
So we've, so direct staff, so keep the original.
Well, we, we.
I'm the only one being honest here.
Can we just take a vote?
What she said is to keep the original signage, but find a place on the building that we can put Kyle Police Department on as well.
On the front, that's a goodbye on the center. Okay, that's, that's my motion.
But, but that's her motion.
If you guys don't pass it, that's fine, but that's my motion. I want to see Kyle Police Department in the front of the building, big, so everybody knows that's our Kyle Police Department.
Which is almost like what I said, but. Okay, so is that a motion? Because I can second that.
It was a motion, yes.
All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay. Motion carries. I didn't hear, I only heard like three people say anything.
Well, if you don't say anything, it's a yes.
I understand, thank you. Motion passes. Motion adjourned.